But Anaplin, he'll come back in in a minute, but we do have four of us here. So I'll just go ahead and get started and call to order. Oh, oh, hi. We'll call to order our committee of the whole meeting at six P M. And first is the good of the order. Did any council members have anything for the good of the order tonight? All right, so we'll just jump right into it. And so first up, we have. Our first item is staff position requests for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget with C A McNamara.
Good evening, council members, staff, mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed positions and a discussion about the positions that were proposed by the mayor in the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four biennium, as well as an additional position that was proposed for discussion. And so what I've done is put together four different position descriptions. They are not official job descriptions. What I've put together today are, for the purposes of discussion, templates for what we have conceived these positions to be doing. The kinds of day-to-day work, the kinds of special deliverables, as well as locating based on discussion from the last time we discussed the proposed positions in the budget, any economic activity or economic development activity that these positions could do as part of either one-time job duties or ongoing job duties. I want to be really clear that these are kind of iterative position descriptions, meaning a lot of it was in my head, looking at the work that I know needs to be done within the city, within the first month of being here, kind of my observations, discussions with the mayor, both formal discussions with the mayor about the the work that needs to be done in the next biennium, as well as kind of informal conversations with the mayor about aspirational work that we would really like to get done. So there's both kind of aspirational duties that are incorporated into the descriptions that I put together, as well as formal work that absolutely must be done by the city to have a well-run government. So that is kind of the prelude to it. All of the positions are proposed as two-year term limited employees. None of these positions are being proposed as full-time permanent F T Es. At the at the end of the biennium, after a two-year assignment in these positions, it would be the city's position that we go back and reexamine what work had been completed, what work still needs to be done. There's absolutely going to be a need to identify work that would have to be brought back to current full-time staff and an assessment about whether or not we make permanent any of these positions and whether or not that's financially viable in the economic conditions that will exist in two years. So a lot of prelude there. Before I jump into any of the particular positions, are there any questions before I get started? And let me put myself on gallery so I can see everyone.
I had one quick question. I just couldn't remember. Did you want to have a council discussion about each position or questions or whatever after each one? Or were we going to wait until the end? I can't remember what we thought might be the most organized way to do it.
I think the most organized would be after each position pausing. Because again, the 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 information that is presented here is kind of me looking at a giant whiteboard, all the work that I know that needs to be done, what I've gleaned from staff, what I've learned from the mayor. It is by no means exhaustive. Yeah, a little bit of a disadvantage, having only been here a month. So after each one, you know, stop, pause, because I'm sure council has a lot of ideas and knowledge that I was not able to capture when I put this information together.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll move to the first one. So that hopefully you can see the screen fairly well. These are also in the council packet. So the first position that I've put together is the Parks and Open Space Manager. So I called this a Parks and Open Space Manager. That does not mean that the position has to be a manager position. A manager positions are outside of the union. I will share with you, I've had an informal conversation with the union. They're interested in having a new position like this incorporated into the union. Doesn't mean it needs to be unionized. It could very well be a manager position. So I've termed it that, not necessarily because I think it has to be a manager, but there are some advantages to making it a management position. So with each of these, I've put together an expected start date. These, after a conversation with staff, I think they're probably a fairly aggressive expected start dates with the time it would take to recruit. Particularly with a parks manager, we'd also probably need to entertain some union negotiations about whether or not the position was in or out of the union. So I've listed an expected start date of two-one, twenty, twenty-three. I think that might be a bit ambitious. But we would, if this ends up being part of the budget, we would definitely want to prioritize it sooner versus later so that a new employee could get started on some of the the parks work that will certainly come on board in the spring and summer. So a general position description in each of them, I looked for putting together some core competencies. What are the things that we really want this person who takes a position to come in knowing and understanding? So, you know, for a Parks and Open Space Manager, you know, you want knowledge of management practices, park planning, park management. But because they also have a function on being an open space manager, we want to want you know, urban forestry, tree canopy knowledge, experience with athletic field maintenance, because certainly Big Rock Park will take up, you know, a fair amount of their time. So then I've looked at essential duties and responsibilities. E D denotes economic development activities. So things that I thought would be directly tied to economic development activity, I've listed within E D here. So these are just the things that I came up with, which would be part of the essential duties and responsibilities. So you know, coordinating the Duval Tree Program, managing the city's recycling program, looking for grants. Each of the positions that are in the budget would have some responsibility for grant management and seeking grants. And coordination of volunteer efforts in our Park Central System, managing the Duval Parks Program, including researching and promoting increased recreational use, supporting the Parks Commission by being the staff liaison to the Parks Commission, developing annual work plans. There will be a large component of working with Public Works, communication and community events, and managing special events and then preparing informational materials. There's also expected deliverables. So this is outside of what would be an essential duty and responsibility. Things that are kind of tangible objects that we would expect at the end of a two-year term that wouldn't happen every single year if this was a full-time position. So value evaluate and participate in the Parks Recreation Open Space Part of the Comp Plan, assist with technical review of land use development applications, work in concert with community events to implement a concessions policy as part of the responsibility related to the parks. And then in each of them, I've identified a total percentage of time on economic development duties. I think with Parks Managers, probably certainly in the first two years, quite a bit of work. I would say about ten percent estimation would be time spent on specific economic development activities. And I've listed a couple here, like opportunities to bring tourism that's associated with our parks and open spaces. So that's this position. As I said, this is not currently in the budget. The Parks Position would require an amendment to the budget to adopt it. There is, you know, several opportunities for funding mechanisms. There is money in the strategic fund if you want to use it to fund this position. There are probably a couple of other ways to fund it. So I'm going to pause here and see if there are any questions about the Parks and Open Space Position.
Yeah, since most of us are virtual tonight, you can utilize your raise hand icon. That might help pop you up on my screen. Or you could try actually raising your hand and I'll try my best to see it. Go ahead, Councilmember Mercer. You're muted.
Yeah, just two quick questions, and it's really around scope. And I know this is a work in progress. So I know Laura had introduced, or Director Thomas sort of put some proposals around resigning the parks, some signage work. Would that sort of also you envision that falling under under this position? Or is that something that would still? And I'm not saying entirely, but but you know, that that seems like that's something that might land there. And then the other one was around any type of coordination with King County. I know there's sort of the the city-owned parks. We also have some parcels that we've, you know, that we we utilize, or particularly like Duval Park, where we've had some challenges, or we, you know, discussing alternate uses or how to use those, if that would also potentially fall under this position.
Yeah, I think so. Working backwards, I think the second one partnering with King County would absolutely fall into this position, the responsibility of this position. You know, it's in King County, there is a whole department assigned to it, and it's pretty siloed work in King County. So you would want someone who has the experience and expertise and the time, frankly, to work with King County in developing that partnership, because it's a big department over there. And, you know, finding the right partnership would be important. The previous one on renaming the parks. If I were to think about assigning that work, I probably would be more inclined to sign it to a communications director in partnership with a Parks Manager. Certainly, I think a Parks Manager would have a important voice in kind of messaging the use of the park, but how to go about planning and naming activity with regard to parks. I'd probably put it more in line with the communications manager or coordinator if if I were to think about how to align the work.
Yeah, and that's fine. And I think it was particularly around some replacing the signage and building some.
Oh, like practical stuff. I was thinking philosophical naming, but yeah, practical stuff. I think it would fall in the parks.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Anaplin, and then we'll go to Schaefer.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted, those were some great points, Ron. Thank you, or Councilmember Mercer, excuse me. I I maybe missed it. I needed to look closer, but I think it's the city of Woodenville kind of lumps together their parks and public spaces. And so public spaces would include, you know, potentially the community buildings. They kind of consider them part of the, you know, parks type umbrella. And I wasn't sure if that was something that you had envisioned. I mean, it deals a lot with rentals and community groups, and so it just seems like a natural combination. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yes and no. I suppose it would depend on whether we have a community events coordinator. Some of the space that is, that would fall under that would tend to be requested by community groups as opposed to recreational groups. But I think there's probably shared responsibility there. I guess I would, I guess it would depend a little bit on the usage of the property where I think that work would more naturally fall.
I guess I was throwing it out there, too. Just there is a maintenance component to those buildings that is also semi-related to, you know, public works. And so to have someone who is overseeing kind of those spaces, those public use spaces from the management side. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there. I could see it being a partnership, like you said, with a community outreach type person. But it does feel like it would be good to have, you know, some management oversight of those facilities as well. So anyway, thanks for considering it.
Yeah. Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I'd been making the assumption here, but I realize it's not actually spilled out here. The the current Parks folks that now report directly or indirectly to Director Lenchewski, will they instead report to this Parks Manager now?
Yeah, so what would, this would essentially create a department within the Department of Public Works. So you would have a Parks Department, because the budget, the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four biennium includes two Parks Maintenance Workers. And so if all three were adopted into the budget, you would have basically created a park system or Parks Department Division, let's call it Division, a Parks Division within the Public Works Department.
Okay, good. Yeah, I I'd assumed that was the case. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
And I think in large part, that's why the union wants to have a voice here in the ultimate decision about what we title this, because it is, you know, it's kind of launching a new division and a new focus for the Public Works Department. And they have employees who who might be interested in having more of a Parks Focus. And, you know, we also might get a lot of external applicants, too, but there's likely to be current employees who would be interested in a position like this.
Sure.
Councilmember Supple.
Yeah, I would like to know, excuse me, I've got a cold. What the Director of Public Works thinks about this position? Is it something that would be of help to his his managing of the Public Works Department? Or are we allowed to ask directors' questions during this? Or is this strictly council members?
Any of this staff certainly have more expertise than I do and are happy to answer questions.
Good evening, councils, mayor, staff, I don't think it's citizens, Stephen Asheski, Public Works. And we are in a town now, right? So it's okay to say Mike or so, yeah, it is a new thought. There certainly, we certainly have the amount of resources. Well, backwards, we certainly have the amount of open space and parks that should have some more dedicated staffing to manage, you know, those assets and resources for the community. I'm not a big fan of titles. Work programming, I think, is important as we've we've put on there. So I think that's things to consider. The shared resource, I think, might be a little difficult, only in how it's managed, not necessarily getting the work done. You know, the homework supervisor supervises all the maintenance staff. So in true, you know, introducing this role would take additional coordination. And yes, I do think you would spin off a division as Parks Focus. You know, the point of putting facilities on the back, because we do rent some of our facility spaces, whether it's field space and or structure, those, you would expect you could get some economies of scale and managing a schedule for all of those things instead of people managing a building, other people managing a field. So I think there's plenty of that to be consolidated. But yeah, no, I I think there is a bigger picture at play, too, where, you know, we've talked about our urban canopy and urban forestry. We utilize a lot of resources in-house with consultants for, you know, tree management. Community calls a lot about dangerous trees adjacent to them. You know, we have to vet and verify all that with an arborist. So you might be able to to get a little bit more bang for your buck. And it may not cost as much as you would expect, because you might be able to roll some of those things out if you find the right person. But I do think the urban, you know, element of the city is an asset. It is economically stimulating. It can certainly have some more labor dedicated to it.
Thank you.
Other questions? I think mine was, is sort of for all of the positions, because I'm just curious. I know this had come up at a prior meeting, talking about, you know, we know everyone's plates are really full. So inevitably, with some new positions, even if they're L T Es, there might be some work shifting. So I know I can kind of look through and and figure out, oh, we already do that. So that must be a bit of a work workload shift versus some new thing that we're not getting done currently that we want to get done. But I was curious if you could kind of give us a guess, I suppose, percentage-wise with each position, not right now, just on this one, but as we go through, about what percentage or what amount do you expect is work that needs to get done, but has not been getting done? Because we don't have someone to do it versus percentage of work that's getting shifted from a current employee, which of course frees them up to do other things. I know there's a waterfall effect there, but I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, it's hard to say, because with each of these, you know, it is, they are new roles. And so to some degree, you know, the ARPA funding provides this economic opportunity to do work that is currently not getting done, invest in the city and invest in city government so that we do have a well-run city. So there is, there are pieces that are, to some degree, one-off, not getting done and need to get done. And then there are others that are shifting of work. So if you take this, for example, so, you know, we have coordination of a Duval Tree Program, but we hire a consultant to do that. So we might still need to have an arborist, depending on the person who would fill this role. But some of those costs might come in-house versus being paid to a consultant. The City Recycling Program, that's currently done. Well, it used to be done by the City Clerk function. I think it's moving to Public Works. But it's kind of a one, it's like a standalone project, doesn't really fit anywhere particularly well. The remainder of this, I mean, so for instance, a Parks Commission is not new work, but kind of dormant work that really could and should be revitalized. You know, Public Works is managing, you know, parks leases and reservations, that's shifting work. In this case, I would say it ends up being about fifty-fifty of work that currently is performed by other folks in other departments. And then probably fifty percent new work or work that is one-off. So for instance, a park recreations and open space plan is a massive body of work. This person would coordinate both the public input into that, as well as working with the planning department to get it done. That's not work that's going to be all day-to-day work. So I would say that project alone in a two-year span is going to take an outsized proportion of this person's time.
Yeah, and I know it's.
It doesn't really answer your question, but.
Well, it's kind of what I was going to say. It's kind of an impossible question. And I realize that, and I appreciate you taking a stab at it. I think it's just understanding that right now, there might be many employees that are a bit randomized. You know, everyone kind of takes on this extra thing, this extra thing, and it's so much more productive to have someone really focused in on one area. And there's so many tasks just associated with this particular item. And it would be interesting, I think, you know, Councilmember Anaplin's point that she brought up about some facilities, you know, like you have Depot Park that also has a building right there. And so I think after a certain number of years, it would be interesting to see the evolution of this position and how that probably naturally could happen. I know we don't know really right now how to tackle that, or, you know, it's kind of just getting started, but that'll be really interesting to watch over the years.
Yeah, and I think with each of these positions, it actually is going to take a fair amount of attention to the work that's being performed. And the evaluation process at the end of the two-year period is going to be vital. So to really identify the the one-off projects that needed to get done, because they either were not getting done at all in, you know, in a city that needs to have them done. Or they truly were one-off projects and being able to identify at the end, you know, what the scope of work is on a day-to-day basis. So with all of these positions that are term limited, you know, getting to a place where I will prepare a good evaluation tool so that we can really really understand what we got for our investment and what we need moving forward is going to be really important.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer, and then Supple, if you, I wasn't sure if you had put your hand down, or if you had another question. So we'll go Councilmember Schaefer first.
Yeah, do do we have any expectations as far as cost, the salary and benefits with this? Or I realize this is very early in the game, and we have, may have no idea, but I'm just wondering if we even have a guess at that.
Yeah, so a little bit will depend on how we ultimately classify the position. So a Parks and Open Space Supervisor, a Parks and Open Space Lead is going to make significantly less than a management position. So a manager position probably is in the one-twenty range per year. A little bit less for a supervisor or lead. So probably more in the eighty thousand dollar range for a lead.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, that's helpful. And as far as benefits are concerned, a rough estimate would be what, I don't know, double the salary with benefits?
No, so I would think, based on what we put in the budget for the other positions, which had salary and benefit roll up, I think probably in a two-year period, you'd end up with a manager in this role at approximately two-thirty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for two years, because you'll have some time for recruitment. It might be a little bit less, but that's my ballpark. You know, again, because I didn't classify this position, I didn't do a really firm cost.
Oh, sure. No, I understand. So it'd be two-thirty for two years for benefits alone? Is that correct?
No, 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 for the total roll-up. Like both, both salary and benefits, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, similar to some degree with what we projected in the budget for, in terms of kind of expertise, the emergency management coordinator. Both of those positions have kind of specialized expertise and the market for them is somewhat particular. I think it probably would be commensurate with the the cost that we associate with the emergency management coordinator in the budget.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions on this position at this moment? Councilmember Supple?
Yeah, who who decides or how has it decided whether this is a a union or non-union position? Is that strictly up to staff, or is that?
No. Yeah, council certainly has input. And so one of the things we would want to take a look at when we're deciding to classify the position is to what degree is a manager needed? And we kind of take a look at the hours that we expect the person to work. Are there a lot of off-duty or off-cycle time? So let's take the easiest and obvious example, the folks that come to this meeting all the time. You would not typically have employees who spend a lot of time in late night or after our meetings in represented roles unless you had a real need to do so. So a little bit depends on how we ultimately define the position, whether or not you would want them in the union or out of the union. Similarly, whether or not they're exempt or hourly employees has a big role to play in whether or not they would be unionized employees. So most hourly employees are unionized and are eligible for overtime and for callback and those kinds of things. You know, this position probably does have a fair amount of callback work or after-hours work that would be associated with the position. And so we just have to kind of figure out what that might look like and whether or not it, how tidily it fits into the current contract with the kind of work we expect it to do. So it's a kind of a non-answer to your question, but a lot of factors.
So so what's what's the process for assuming that, assume, I assume that this, if this position gets approved, is, I'm not even sure if that's on the agenda for tonight. But suppose it gets approved, do you go out and then then does the the U S City Administrator work up the contract? Contract and decide whether it's a, uh, management position or non-management or union position? And then come back to, come back to the council?
Yeah, what I would do is actually write up a job description and, um, put a job description together. And, uh, and classify the position. Based on the feedback that I get from council on how you, you know, do you like what's written here? Is this how you imagine the position? Um, if it is, I would write up a job description. And, uh, classify the position, assign it a salary and a benefits package. And then the next step in that with new positions is to. Uh, request a meeting with the union, show it to the union. The union would identify whether or not it thinks it has jurisdiction over any of the work. That's in the job description and then the union would. Here, because we're a smaller, you know, small city, um, they wouldn't really need to. Petition or appeal for the work, but that's kind of the process is they would kind of lay claim to the position. And then we would negotiate whether or not it would be unionized or not with the union. Um, this one particularly will require union negotiation because it's. It's integrated work into a department with, that is almost fully unionized. And there will be handoffs with maintenance workers and others to share jurisdiction with each other. So there is a high likelihood that the union will want. A supervisor position, if it's titled supervisor, to be unionized because it shares a body of work. With other unionized employees. Um, alternatively, if we determined that the work is. The work that's required to be successful in this position is managerial level work, making. You know, decisions about uses of parks, um, managing grants, supervising a supervisor. Um. Uh, kind of more. I don't want to say sophisticated, but decisions that, um, end up. Kind of high on the procurement tree. So they have the ability to make decisions that, you know, cost. A fair amount of money or buying city resources. You would probably tend to classify that as a manager, in which case it wouldn't be.
Okay, hey, thanks. That's good explanation. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we move on? All right, back to you.
Okay, so the next one that I put together is the communications coordinator slash public information officer. Um, this one is just kind of framing out from the last conversation. This is a new position. Um, there is no one in the city. Currently assigned as the PIO. Um, the mayor for, uh, in many respects has operated as the PIO. Um, but this would be a communications coordinator position. That has the official title of the public information officer. So the person, um, when you look at position description, responsible for overseeing citywide communication and messaging. Um, develops comprehensive and effective media promotional public information programs. Uh, information for external and internal audiences. Um, serves as the PIO, as I said, which, um, is the person kind of in charge of messaging for the police department. Um, you know, could have probably helped quite a bit today with the snow event. Um, so it also helped public works. So kind of a single point of reference for how the city communicates to the public. Um, they would be our social media content manager. Um, they would retain records of our social media accounts for the purposes of complying with. Um, RCW forty-two fifty-six. And they would help you all communicate and develop effective communication strategies. Um, be kind of the inner, um. The interplay between our customers, developers, property owners. Um, and with how we communicate and they would be charged with having, you know, a consistent voice and authentic voice for city communications. Um. They would prepare recommendations and reports to city council on potential business activity. Um. Uh, they, so part, a large part of their work, um, is public and stakeholder management. So they would have in this two-year B I N A M, a lot of this work. But I imagine a permanent communications coordinator has that work ongoing. But in this particular case, um, with the comp plan coming and all of the public. Um. Public opportunities to share in the comp plan, there'd be a fair amount of work in getting public stakeholder involvement in the comp plan. Um, but also things like coordination of town halls, manage the city calendar, liaison for board and committees. Um, this one actually has probably thirty percent economic development activities, as I kind of thought about the position. And we would want them to be a grant manager, not necessarily to manage the records of grants. But to manage opportunities and to solicit opportunities. Right now, I'm kind of thinking about Mayor Protam's question, grant activity is dispersed all throughout the city in a really uncoordinated way. And good grants management, um, operate under a single voice and a single kind of perspective. On how to go about getting grants and how we write grants. And so I would imagine that this person would, um, be tasked to do that. Um. Let's see, uh, there's also a liaison opportunity with the Chamber of Commerce, which is dormant right now, um, due to. Um, staff issues, you know, not ability to. Um, we don't really have staff assigned specifically for this and it would be a really good opportunity and. Promote economic development to have someone really whose job it is is to liaison with the Chamber of Commerce and augment their work. Um, and so then there are quite a bit of expected deliverables that I've identified for this position that are kind of one-off. One is an ADA compliant website. Um, we have, I'm going to knock on wood here in my office. Um, I will share with you, I've been with an organization that had an ADA complaint. Um, and went through a federal investigation for having a non-compliant website. Um, it is a very long and complicated process, so we, we need to do this work and we have no one on staff who, um. Really has the expertise and understanding to do it. Um, we need an internal data and information governance committee and information storage policy. Um. Uh, there are other, uh, coordinating with lobbyists if we get, you know, if the budget is approved with lobbying efforts. The communications coordinator would be the liaison for that. Um, we need a new city logo. And so as I'm thinking, if you look up to the core competencies of this person, I would. Hope to find someone who has a background in graphic design and media relations. Um. We need a social media policy, small business to support, like a really directed strategy on how to promote and support. Small business, um, tourism marketing, new welcome, new resident welcome pack, uh, packet. And then some staff satisfaction and health survey management. Um, would come from a communications coordinator in, again, one authentic voice and be able to report back to the council. On those issues. And then down below, I've thought of some very, um, very specific targeted economic development duties or activities. That the person could also engage in. Um, so this is in the budget, uh, the information for. The cost of this position has been penciled out. And, uh, you can find it in this story. So there's a story on, um, position descriptions. I, I actually, uh, finance director, I can't remember what it's called in the story. It's called position, might be called position descriptions. But you'll find this information. Currently in the budget and, uh, that's what I have for this position.
Um, I think council member Supple has had his hand up, but I think that was a mistake. You, maybe not yet. Um, we'll go mayor Okerlander and then council member Schaefer.
Um, for the new council members, I do want to remind folks that while this is a new position. Uh, we had for several years, um, FTEs did a portion of their position and a certain number of hours a week. Dedicated to public information work that was primarily social media. Much of that was focused around. Um, you know, Dr. Director Linashevsky can add in, but much of it was focused around public safety. Uh, road access, construction projects, uh, overall community awareness. Um, a lot was done with a short, uh, a small amount of time. However. Um, one of the things that we do have missing on here is that another responsibility of communications coordinator. Is to, um, take all of our council recordings and make sure that they're posted online and available to the public. Uh, which hadn't been happening for almost two years. So, uh, we have some of that ongoing. But there's a direct access to the community, um, to what the city does that's not, um, not being shared. Uh, in a timely manner or at all.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll share that there's, you know, it, our social media presence is interesting. We have. You know, really talented staff doing full-time jobs who on. What, when they have time, post to social media. Um, you know, there's a woman in public works who can get on social media. Um, I think, um, that our police department. Um, front desk person can get on social media, but that's not a coordinated. Strategy for social media. I mean, a, a social media strategy. Comes from one voice, one department, one person. Um, and it, it tends to be managed and curated in a way that really promotes the city. And frankly, we're not doing that right now.
Council member Schaefer?
See, um, yeah, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, the, uh, as far as the liaison with the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we need to remember that Chamber of Commerce represents a subset of businesses in Duval. Uh, the reason I say that is, you know, that is, is somewhat obvious. So there's a lot of businesses that are not members. But there's also a lot of businesses that are members, but not actively involved in, in the chamber. So I would, you know, hope that a person like this would, uh. Basically beat the bushes a little bit more. I think we, you know, that particular description, we probably need this. Instead of Chamber of Commerce, we probably need to say a business owners in, in Duval, uh, including the chamber, you know, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, but like I say, let's, let's not make the mistake that think, thinking the chamber represents. The, uh, business community as a whole, certainly, uh, does not. Um, let's see, another thing, I think you mentioned this, Cynthia, under, under. Uh, expected deliverables. I really think we should have some mention of, of, uh. You know, small business, uh, economic development grants, uh, there. And you, you said something to that effect too. Uh, so, so I'm definitely on the same page with that. And I guess the other thing that concerns me about. The economic development portion of this is the thirty percent of, of this person's time. Uh, with a role this diverse, and it is a very diverse role. There's a lot of stuff on the, on the list. Uh, a number of these things could, uh, be all-consuming and, and easily turn into a full-time job. Uh, I am concerned that thirty percent, uh. Isn't, uh, isn't going to represent the economic development aspect of this sufficiently. Uh, I'd prefer something like fifty percent. Uh, I'm certainly, you know, up, you know. You know, open for discussion on that particular thing, but, but. Economic development and this communications coordination are so intertwined in, in my mind. Uh. And it's actually quite difficult to separate one, you know. One for the social media example. Well, there's an economic development, uh, portion of that, uh, as well, right? And I think you could, you know, say that for, you know, for a number of these, but, uh. Like I say, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, when you piece part somebody's job. You know, well, and we used to do this back in my own company. You're going to do fifteen percent of this and you're going to do thirty percent of this and, you know, et cetera. The, well, for one thing. It's impossible to keep track of. And for another thing, you know, as, you know, many things, uh, consumers tend to be the. You know, the hot, you know, hot item of the day. So. Um, like I say, I think we should consider making this a fifty percent economic development role instead of just thirty.
Yeah, and when you look at it, I mean, I think you're right. I've kind of identified. Some very specific, um, economic development opportunities. But honestly, having a compliant website and a robust website that has a lot of information that's easy to find is economic development. Having a logo that is interesting. And new and refreshed is economic development activity. So there. A social media strategy that is defined and used is also economic development activity. So. I kind of popped in the economic development denote, uh, denotation to some things. But really overall, a good communic-, a, a city with a good communication strategy is. Um. Is largely designed to promote. Both the welfare of the, the existing residents, but also the economic interests of the city.
Uh, absolutely, yeah. And maybe it's just a feel-good thing with me, but I, I would feel better if that was a fifty percent instead of just the thirty percent.
Yeah, and again, you know, this is me trying to, um, really be responsive to council and think about, you know, what I heard from you, particularly. Council member Schaefer and being able to identify areas of economic development activity, but also just like. What I thought while I was drafting it. So lots, lots of work that can be done to.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, no, good. Th- thank you, thank.
Council member Lovett and then Napolin.
Uh, you actually answered a little bit of my question, um, as in your response, just in the end there, um. But I think I would second what Rick was saying, uh, around just like the, the, the intensity of some of these brackets. Or blocks, some of them are really heavy, you know, and I think what would be interesting for me to understand better or, or certainly if I was like. Putting myself in the position of like taking this job, you know, like putting myself into those shoes, really understanding what, like, what's the order of importance? Like, I'm curious as to like, let's just use social media, for example, uh, like Instagram, like what percentage of time? Do we really need to spend as a city on Instagram? And, and you may actually have like. That data that actually says like, actually people engage with Instagram for snow palmy and that's Y Z, this many, this much. But for me, like, I've never looked at a city's Instagram, but I do go to their website. So your point of like, the website should be robust, it should be ADA. You know, comfortable, it should have like a fresh feel, you know, if I was looking to move here, I should be able to click on the website and get a really good understanding of like. What the culture is in the city. So to me, that's like a really high value item, whereas like. Our Twitter account is like insanely low value. I'm just saying this is just like, you know, I'm just spitballing here, but you get what I'm saying. So I think part of this is a little bit of a kitchen sink problem that I'm seeing in this where I'm just not really understanding. Um. Like how, what are the most important things? And, and that would be helpful for me to understand when I'm thinking about this role, like. What were they, what is the really most important thing? And it, it sounds like you were aiming at website and just sort of like that as being like top tier. Um, which would make a lot of sense to me, but clarity on that would be helpful for me. And that's like a little mix of, uh, my two cents and also just maybe something I would be looking for. As we refine this particular, um. J D.
Yeah, I, you know, I would say when we look at each of them. Um, the expected deliverables tend to be among the higher priority because. We really only have the position for two years. And in two years, we have to evaluate, you know, whether it was effective and. Um, the things I've put in expected deliverables tend to be the things that aren't currently getting done. That are desperately needed to get done and that frankly, I don't have staff in the city that can easily pick them up. Either because of capacity or expertise.
Uh, council member Napolin?
Yeah, I just, uh, here, I'll put my camera on. I, I wanted to second what council member Schaefer was saying about. Being more explicit about the economic development component to the position, because I think. You know, you could really say every position in the entire city has economic development. Uh, components to it, you know, um, and, and it's true. But there are tasks and initiatives that you can do that are very specifically related to economic development and could have a more. Um. You know, a more. Specific outcome, um, besides just kind of more of a vague, yeah, having a great website is economic development and. You know, all of those things. Well, while I think there is some truth to that, I, I do think that there are some very specific initiatives that could be, um. Pursued. And, you know, council member Schaefer and I had looked through quite a few, you know, economic development plans and. There's some great ideas. There's even great ideas in our, our comp plan that had been completed quite a few years ago and we're, we're going to. Engage in that again. And it could be that there are some initiatives that we want to pursue. And so I just want to make sure that there's enough. Time allocated and an expectation that there will be time allocated to these things. That it won't just be an afterthought where you're like, well, you know, the website's really economic development. Like I need focused work. Related to economic de- development. And I think that that's, uh, possibly what council member Schaefer is saying too, that we want to. You know, make sure there's enough time in there that economic development doesn't just become like this afterthought or. You know, make sure there's enough time in there that economic development doesn't just become like this afterthought or, you know, just. A claim that, well, all these things are economic development. Um, so I know as part of uh, the ARPA funding. There was an expectation that we would do some economic development initiatives, and we haven't identified exactly what those are yet. But we hope to, and I would hope that there would be room in this position to um, you know, oversee some of those.
Yeah, and I mean, I think with each of the positions, my own included. Um, it it requires constant reprioritization of. How I'm using my time and how any of these positions are using their time depending on council priorities and mayor priorities. And so, you know, if we. If we start seeing that the nits and nats of these positions are getting too bogged down in kind of day-to-day tasks, it's. You know, absolutely incumbent upon us to kind of reset, refocus and say, no, this position has, you know, some real key. Key requirements and expectations and deliverables at the end of a two-year cycle and that we've moved the dial. Um, particularly on economic development.
Okay, I appreciate that. I I just think that in the past we've added, I mean, we've added so many positions since I've been on council. And still, whenever, you know, council feels like, oh, I wish we could do this. It's like, there's no time. It's all used up. And so I I think that it's, there's that um. Sense that if we don't specify ahead of time, that a certain amount of time needs to be dedicated to these things. Other things that are determined urgent. Will take over the entire time. So even though, do you see where I'm going here? And so I. This has been an experience of mine, being on council for so long, is that um. You know, there've been a lot of council priorities that are reflective of the community's priorities that we. Think we're adding staff, so eventually we'll have capacity to do these things. And then when we want to do them, there's never time. And so unless you reserve the time. It won't happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I can't speak to what positions have been added. I don't, you know, haven't done a deep dive into that. And these positions and new ones are. Um, you know, eh, they're definitely. I I don't want to say experimental, because I'm trying to flesh out and with some specificity, the work that they're going to do. A little different, for instance, than a parks maintenance person, you know, if a parks maintenance person, we have two in the budget. When they get hired, the expectation is they're doing parks maintenance. And if they're not. I I mean, I expected that council and I will be having a serious conversation. About, you know, people we hire, making sure that they're doing the work that they were hired and expected to do.
All right, I think Councilmember Lovett just still has his hand up from the last time. Um, other council members have feedback or questions?
Yeah, I would just say what's interesting about this position to me, um, is that a lot of. Or at least some of the expected deliverables um, come with their own price tag perspect. Depending on the kind of person you get in this role. I mean, I think it's. Awesome to try and get somebody who has graphic design, but they may not, right? I mean, you might find the great person just doesn't have that skill set. So then. Something like a new city logo, or, you know, would they have the capability? When you say the website redesign, I'm assuming you're not necessarily looking for somebody with that skill set. That that would be going out to. A contractor to complete that work, or are you kind of just seeing what you can get, because you never know? Um, would you have somebody internally work on that? Because I know that takes away hours as well from the other duties.
So um, on those two pieces, so we actually have um. Someone who's offered to do our city logo for us. Um. I haven't looked at the cost component, but Sarah, our prior city clerk had negotiated, um. And if not free, really economical, um. The com- uh, ADA compliant website, I know there are grants available through the Department of Education for this. Um, I will share with you based on prior experience, the difference in cost between doing it voluntarily. Before you get hit with a compliance um, complaint. And then having to use one of the um, government-approved contractors to do your website is the difference of about three hundred thousand dollars. So you really want to do this work on your own?
Oh, yeah, for sure. And I, that is actually very important to me. And what I was trying to say, I guess, was that. Um, some of these deliverables with this position might end up needing to get outsourced anyways, so. Um, it's just an interesting thing that comes up with certain positions and not others. Um, for me, the new city logo is. A fun idea. I, as long as it's kind of a sub-bullet of that tourism marketing campaign, if it's a very functional, like. It's not just we're rebranding because it'll catch people's attention, like if it's actually attached on to that. You know, bigger um, strategy and focus, but. Other than that, I mean, I I hear what some of the other council members are saying. I think for me, when I read this, you know, it is so important to have. That person that gets called or can develop a good relationship with the media as well. And some of the conferences I've gone to, um, I've sat in on some of those sessions where they talk about. Um, what to do if, you know, the media calls you and things like that. So it would be an interesting idea to think about if this person. Could also, uh, not necessarily, uh, train council and and other electeds, but. Just point us in the right direction of maybe some good annual training. Maybe there's an online webinar we can watch, you know, because I think it's a good idea for. For us to know, not to be the person that responds, of course, but. How do you handle that? Because there are some really interesting strategies that media can use to try and get you to say anything. So anyways, yeah, but other than that, I mean, I, this is a really interesting position. I think I understood it a little better. How it was different from community events, once I saw what you had put together here. So I really appreciate that, um. And then with the new resident welcome packet, is that talking about putting something in the chambers or developing our own? I was just curious what you meant by that.
So this is something that was suggested to me by staff, um, that we do that to some degree, but it's, um. And probably it could use a refresh. Um, it could be more interesting, more inclusive, frankly, of new residents. And what we have in the city to offer new residents from a um, kind of. A broader community, so, um. That's kind of where I was thinking is more of a, a refresh from a. Kind of um, bigger community perspective.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Um, I thought I saw somebody else's hand. Were there other questions? Uh, Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, no, not a question, excuse me. Yeah, we were talking about s- uh, new city logos. I just, uh, I'm not suggesting this for a new city logo, but the uh, chamber. Uh, oh, it's backwards, isn't it? Uh, well, okay, it's more, more of the fact that it's backwards, but.
It's not.
Chamber has a nice, uh, very nice, uh, logo on a new Christmas, uh, ornament, and uh. It's something we might, uh, wanna at least, uh, take, uh, take advantage of.
Yeah, oh, that's cute, yeah.
Thank you. All right, not seeing any other questions.
Um, so thank you for um, the preview, Mayor Prette McHenry. So next up is the Community Events Coordinator. So I'll direct your attention to the bottom, kind of in line with what we've been talking about. Um, for this one, I anticipated about forty percent of their work being associated with economic development activities. Um, so again, uh, position description. The core competency, so um, each of these positions are somewhat unique in the kind of. Person who I think would exhibit excellence in the role. So here, you really want someone who is engaging. Um, who has high social intelligence skills, good with people. Um, experience with managing facilities, equipment, events. An event planner, um, somebody with, you know, experience in doing big events is really different. Um, frankly, than, you know, somebody who does communications, um, different. Different levels of skill, different um, talents needed. Um, we, for this one, you do want someone who has experience with managing grant applications and awards. Because I would imagine a large amount of this person's um. Work really should be devoted to augmenting special events and programming in the city. So, um, here I've looked at kind of essential duties in the two-year period. Um, so administer and coordinate special events. That doesn't mean doing them all on their own. Um, so I'm not proposing to pull in all the special events that happen in the city and make them. Uh, City of Duval Managed Events, but certainly, there's a lot of coordination around special events. That falls in kind of odd places around the city, and I would expect this person to kind of take up the helm on a lot of that. Um, so you see that here, grant management, assist with internal staff events. So we have a lot of stuff that. Relates to internal staff events, so Halloween, we can do more here. But honestly, we don't necessarily have capacity to do more on the citywide sponsored um, events that we do for staff and community. Um, this person would liaison with the Duval Cultural Commission, the Historical Society, the King County Library System. Um, we do have budgeted and have planned for um, some survey work with our arts community. Um, on kind of what the arts profile of Duval looks like with. Not just the DFA, but with the entire arts community. And so this person would um, kind of spearhead that work as well. Um, you know, developing and doing work in partnership with homeowners associations. Promotion of events. Um, certain amount of media work related to special events. They would assist with parks and open space. Manager to solicit and organize recreational opportunities. Um, there are a couple deliverables, um, that you would expect the Community Events Coordinator to participate in. Um, we do need to set up and re- and to some degree. It's a refresh, but also a reset on our community and her human services grant criteria. So that's a project. It probably is not a long project, but we need to get it done and out the door. Um, there is an opportunity for this person to help with HR hiring events, and I put this actually kind of. Um, as a deliverable, but has an economic development. Component to it. Getting out and participating in regional hiring events draws a lot of interest in your city. And getting high-quality applicants both, um. You know, draws, draws interest, but also starts spreading the word that we're an employer of choice. So I see this both as kind of internal partnership work, um, with myself, frankly, as the person doing HR. But also as a way to spread the word about the city of Duval, and those hiring events take time. And they take someone who is really good at promotion to be um, in those spaces, typically at community colleges. Also at military bases to do that work. Um. Uh, some amount of staff training, um, public participation plan and implementation for the comp plan. And then, um, I have here kind of other duties that I imagine that would be associated with economic development. Um, this is a position that's in the budget, um, the dollars and cents are there to be found in open.
Questions? Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh, let's see, the, y- yeah, not really a question, just a s- an a a suggestion. And the suggestion would be, uh, new, new events. And I think maybe that's insinuated in some of these, uh. Things, but I, but, uh, as you'll see in the, uh. In this, uh, uh, survey results that I'm gonna very briefly present later on. Uh, that's a big deal to our local businesses. So, so, uh, you know, creating some new events, be it something like, uh. You know, my favorite idea is a taste of Duval with the, you know, with the wine, beer, spirits and food. Uh, all local, uh, uh, kind of event, uh, but, you know, not necessarily exactly that, but just new events in general. To, uh, draw more, more people into, uh, Duval. And obviously, that'd be a major. You know, part of their, uh, economic development, uh, percentage.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of fun events that could easily be replicated here in Duval. Um, my husband and I went to the one in, uh, North Bend. Where you went to the restaurants and the, and the boutiques opened up at night and had kind of, uh. Punch card, wine and beer thing, and I mean, it drew a lot of people. So, um, certainly, there's a lot to learn from our neighbors and the stuff that they're doing that works really well.
Exactly, yes.
Night markets, night markets are kind of a thing right now.
Yeah. Other questions, comments? Mayor, I saw your hand up for a moment, but I don't know if that was an accident, because I saw it go down.
Um, it was just kind of, eh, eh, uh, City Administrator McNabb really kind of hit it, is that that is part of the point of the position besides. Supporting our cultural commission and taking care of things that need to be taken care of now. Um, that aren't receiving the attention they need or contracting out, so it's very piecemeal. Um, is to bring all that stuff in and and create some of those new events that bring people. Um, developing events is very difficult. Maintaining it isn't nearly as difficult. Uh, so getting those things in place and moving forward, um, and, uh, you know, that along with communications. Uh, you can really get the word out about your events and bring people to your community. Um, so those two positions and tho- that work actually goes very much hand in hand.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a lot to add. I I sort of agree, eh, you know, with with the comments that were were made. I I think the other opportunity here is, you know, we, we. Often talk about the challenges of a small city and 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 and, you know, are where we are and and our draw. I think there's another opportunity here in, in conjunction with some of the communication. Components to to expand outreach even, you know, to the other cities in the valley. So, you know, this is obviously a city. Targeted role in city events. I think there are a lot of, you know, we support. Uh, carnations, Fourth of July, we have this sand blast to to also cross-promote and 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 build some of those relationships that. Uh, would allow economies, well, not necessarily economies of scale, but but, uh, broader reach and expand reach. So I think both. In terms of new events and how we, uh, in conjunction, eh, again, with this sort of communication. Coordinator to to really expand the pool in in which we draw and how we, how we, we bro- promote through, um. You know, deeper engagement with our community cities.
Councilmember Naplin?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, and it's probably already included here, but there's several events. Put on by other groups, uh, the Art and Wine Walk, the, uh, Quilt Show. Some of these other events that never ca- really came back, um, after COVID, and they're struggling. And so I'd really like to see some outreach in this position to help those events get going again, and whatever support we can provide. And I. I totally agree, and I, it's. Conversations among prior councils have said the same, that we don't want to get into the business of running all of these events, but we will be a supportive. Um, entity for these events. So, um, I was glad to hear that, um. Uh, but anyway, I just want to make sure that some of those other events that I I think. When I've talked to businesses, those are the type of that events that really help their businesses. They, they aren't like, uh, Duval days, which is great in its own way, but it kind of takes over the whole city. And sometimes it can be disruptive for businesses, but those art and wine walks, the quilt show that brings people inside businesses to actually do the shopping. And it's funny, you mentioned the punch card. I was in, um. You're north of San Diego, and they were, it was an evening we were going out. I mean, I went to a Mexican place, but. There were all of these people walking around with these, uh, necklaces with this big punch card hanging, and they were going from place to place to place, and it was just. Absolutely packed. And it was just, it was a really fun event. So, um, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Questions, comments? Um, just really quick, I wanted to say, I know you're moving on though, but I, the, the one bullet point that was the shortest, but was the most impactful to me was the recruit. Um, and organize or manage volunteers. And to me, that's just such an untapped resource. We just haven't had somebody dedicated really to. Harness that, and so many people I talk to are ready to jump in and help. It's just. You know, as often happens in a small city, in a small town, whatever, it's just, you know, you can get overwhelmed by taking on too much. Um, and so just having someone to really, you know, manage it all, but then you can step in and help the bit that you can, but you don't have to run the whole thing. That's. That's gonna be a really big boost for our city, I think.
Yeah, I imagine, you know, you have. Quite a few high schoolers that have community service projects. That really could use volunteer opportunities in a kind of concerted, organized way. I mean, I remember when my son was trying to finish his IB diploma, and he had to do the community service thing, trying to find a volunteer opportunity that would work was. Yeah, it was not easy.
For sure. Thank you.
Okay, the final one, which is also in the budget. Oh, um, Councilmember Naplin, did you have a question?
I think she forgot to pull her hand down.
Um, so this is in the budget, um. So again, kind of the, the same thing here, um, position description. Core competencies of this position are extremely unique. Um, there are people that do this work that have a specialization in this work. And so I've listed here the background knowledge in NIMS and ICS, um. Uh, experience developing and modeling, emergency management training and curriculum. Preferred to have public sector, non-governmental emergency management experience, whether that's right cross or something else. Um, so there are some essential duties and responsibilities of this person. Um, they would be the image, uh, emergency management coordinator. They would work in coordination with PIO. And other city departments to respond to emergencies. It serves as our point of contact for FEMA, King County Fire. It serves as our point of contact for FEMA, King County Fire, um, emergency management. And they would coordinate our um hazardous materials in our workplace, uh, manage our LNI programs, which um uh are sorely in need of some investment and focus, and I'll leave that there. Um, uh, could you know, other um emergency management um items here. This is one where you only see three categories in the expected deliverables, but these three items are tremendous and the first two are extremely time consuming. And without someone here um or a a very uh intense focus on these things, they won't get done. So um the first is a comprehensive emergency management plan. Um, that is a very large project and a very large deliverable to get done. The second, which we don't appear to have in kind of a really organized form. And um the mayor and I have talked somewhat extensively about this. Um, because I've I've come from an organization that had a very expensive extensive coop plan, a continuation of operations plan. And we need one of those. Um, and we need it, you know, really well defined. And when you have a really um well-developed coop, you also have to do tabletop exercises to make sure that everybody understands a coop. So um, for instance, I've done the one for the jail when um I was there where we kind of did a tabletop exercise that we had an earthquake and who was going to be responsible for managing the King County Jail. I was number nine. That was a very scary place to be. I know nothing about managing a jail. So um that work is extensive. So these deliverables are a little bit different than the other positions in that. Um, it it they will take a uh uh quite a bit of focus to get them. And then um similarly develop developing a grant and funding database for sources for funding to manage emergency and mitigation efforts. Um, there is a lot of grant opportunities for emergency management planning. And um we do that well here, but we can do a lot more um in finding those grant opportunities. And then there are other duties associated with um economic development that I've listed here. Um, I estimate about fifteen percent, um largely because so much of the work is really unique to um emergency management. And so this is one where, you know, at the end of the two-year biennium, we're gonna need to look at, did did the deliverables get done? And what work remains for someone to um do this work? And you know, if and where would the work go at the end of the two-year biennium if it is not um put into a full-time position? So, but in the meantime, there is a lot of emergency management work that is not getting done right now that um will need to get done in the biennium.
All right, Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, th- this is another position that's near and dear to my heart, uh, by the way. I I have a couple suggestions. Again, I'm not gonna phrase these as only suggestions uh as far as deliverables are are concerned. Uh, these may sound uh a little drastic, but really I don't think they they are. Um, you know, drills and simulations, I think that really needs to be part of the of this position's deliverables. Uh, that's one way that you actually practicing is uh is one way that you make sure things go as smoothly as possible in a true emergency situation. Uh, the the other thing, and I I've, you know, had some discussion with others on this. I I really think Duval needs an evacuation plan. Uh, that sounds drastic, but look at what's happened in in recent times, especially with the warmer summers that we've uh experienced all over. Very close to uh my uh house in uh Colorado. In fact, extremely close to my house in uh Colorado, there was a unexpected grass fire uh this past summer that uh they had to evacuate the whole town of Louisville and all the surrounding area. This is way over twenty thousand people, much bigger than
Including my cousin.
Yeah, was that right? Okay, you have some experience. And I I know, I personally know lots of people that had their houses burned down. Oh, and all said and done, over a thousand houses burned to the ground. Uh, absolutely nothing left. Anyway, uh, just using that as an example, an evacuation plan for Duval is not an unreasonable thing to uh have in place. As part of that, it's gonna require some extensive coordination with uh with the public, uh, with folks that live here, making sure neighbors get notified, that type of thing. Uh, and uh, you know, that's something, that's the type of uh deliverable I think we need out of this uh this position.
Great, thank you. I've added it to the list.
Councilmember Supple?
Yeah, the uh, you know, the meeting we had with IT last week, it kind of uh brought to mind if there's an IT outage or an IT emergency. I'm thinking that maybe um, you know, communication of that to staff and and city council and maybe residents of Duval. There's there's respect to not being able to pay bills online or whatever would possibly fall under the purview of this this uh position.
Yeah, when you do one of those tabletop exercises, you always have your IT department there because it's critical. You know, when uh when you're in an emergency, you you need to know how your IT department is going to deploy both in the short term and in the long term. And that it's a Councilmember Schaefer's um point, that you learn with practice. So knowing how quickly things need to turn to get the city back up and running, whether it's, you know, your people, your infrastructure, your IT, your communication structure. Um, you can put that all in writing, but if you don't practice it, all of a sudden, two years later, you're like, oh, wait, what what did the plan say? What what am I supposed to do? So yeah, IT is a critical component of that emergency planning.
Yeah, I just I I maybe this because it was new last week, I didn't, I don't see it in your um essential duties and responsibilities or
No, I wrote this.
Wow, no, three. Yeah, I know you wrote it a while ago. So maybe maybe it could, when it gets updated, you could include something like that.
Yeah.
Mayor Okerlander?
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Um, and first off, the Councilmember Supple's point about IT. Um, that's uh one of the the leading areas where jurisdictions and government agencies across the country um are not doing well. Um, so cybersecurity is currently one of the biggest threats to local governments in the country beyond all natural disasters. Um, so you're absolutely right, but that's, you know, these are, you know, I want everyone to also keep in mind, these are just things that we've identified immediately off the top. And you can already see that they're more than an FTE's worth of work, even in that two-year period. Um, so um I also wanted to kind of mention, you know, tie in. You know, when you look at um our large-scale community events, this is another place that emergency managers are at the table. So for example, um Duval days, uh, there's been lots of changes to community events. As we all know, there's been lots of disasters at parades and festivals uh over the last several years. And so emergency management, besides law enforcement and fire, is becoming an essential component of those planning processes. Um, you also have, um, you know, the coop plans are obviously essential. Uh, most major organizations have them, most school districts have them. Um, especially with as few employees as we have. Employees, we need to know where employees are at, um, where they're going to be at, how we can reach them, how they can get to work um in an emergency, because if we have an earthquake, we will be an island for potentially weeks without anyone coming to us. So having that plan in place and having one knowing their their roles and responsibilities is essential. Um, I think another thing to to point out as well is that that economic development come over. When it, emergency management is there for businesses after disaster. So for example, we have the huge windstorm in two thousand and six, uh, which I believe is about the time that Director Lenishewski was appointed uh the statutory emergency management director position in the city of Duval right before the power went out years and years and years ago. Um, and a huge part of that is actually the emergency manager reaching out and the communications folks as well, reaching out to the local businesses after a disaster to make sure that they're applying for that federal aid, make sure that they're having their needs addressed, gathering information for us, for our state legislators and for our congressional delegation to identify the needs and help them get back on their feet as quickly as possible. Um, and that is an essential role that you won't necessarily see in a job description, but as far as FEMA and homeland security training, that is, they they have classes and pawn classes um in this work that people are trained in. Um, and I think um to the point as well of, you know, Councilmember Schaefer, thank you for bringing up the brush fire situation. You know, it wasn't that long ago that we had two fires less than ten miles as the crow flies from the city of Duval. Um, during that time, we had multiple brush fires, several in Monroe, several in between Duval and uh Carnation. And if you do have one of those wildfires moving fast, the fire district is not going to be the one to help evacuate. It's going to be our police department. It's going to be our public work staff. Um, and our public work staff has a responsibility to do everything in our city, has a responsibility to try and find ways to secure our infrastructure and make sure our streets and our water and sewer are protected as best as you can during an event like that. Obviously, there are times that you can't, you can't uh protect them, but that's an important component. And I, what we've seen over the last several years is this increase in um in actual need for disaster management. And that's not going away. It's getting more severe. Um, you know, there are some cities that are frankly really behind the ball and they end up in a world of hurt when something does happen. Um, and so we're definitely trying to be proactive, acknowledge that we're an island, acknowledge that we have unique risks that other jurisdictions don't have, um, as well as a unique community. We don't have a major freeway nearby that people can go and flee to. To Councilmember Schaefer's point, um, as far as an evacuation plan, which we, that's a component typically of a an emergency management plan, a separate policy outside of that. We don't, it's very possible during a severe situation that we won't have a way out of the city of Duval. So having those plans in place and identifying and having people trained in practice and how you get out and how what your options are is very, very necessary to the health and safety of our community. Um, so I just wanted to add on some of those things because this is, you know, this is actually something that I'm very, very passionate about. For those that don't know, I do have an emergency management background as well as a communications background um and have worked multiple disasters. Um, and living in Duval for the last twenty-two years, there have been multiple times where the city did not have the resources to respond to its community. Um, the windstorm is one of them. That's just one. Um, remember Snowmageddon a few years ago? It was all hands in deck for the city staff just trying to to manage the event. We were lucky that we had a part-time emergency management person at the time who um was highly skilled and had been accepted into multiple elite homeland security and FEMA uh courses, which is unusual for someone that's not in the job full-time. Um, and we had it really well. We had it really good. Uh, but this is, we're hitting the point of no return of, we either do this right, or we tell our community, we're not going to do what we need to do to keep the city safe and protect our communities and communicate with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I am experiencing the same problem. I just saw Councilmember Mercer mention the power flickering. So let me get my video back on here.
It's very apropos, given
Councilmember Mercer.
Um, you you know, all are sort of valid points. I I wanted to sort of touch on on two areas. And again, I don't know if these are on scope. I mean, this is, there's a sort of a a roadmap of things we want to do. There's things we'll be able to do within the two, you know, two years that this role would be um in place. But I think one of the other things that was called out during the IT review is the the city's antalong phone system. So just in terms of outbound communications, I don't know, again, necessarily since scope, but we don't have an emergency SMS. We do have social media, but obviously if people lose power, we don't have like Fall City or other some radio stations we can leverage. So, you know, again, I think that's a piece that uh would be great to coordinate with IT and and not necessarily sort of driving that, but that figuring out those requirements and the things that we would need as as part of that. I think the other is really, um, and I think um the Mayor Portem brought up with regards to the community events is is also the the importance of volunteers in terms of how we coordinate volunteers, whether it is sort of an explorer program with the police department, whether it is designated community reps, whether it's working with HOAs to to sort of coordinate response, because a lot of that a a response will be local within those initial communities and community circles. So um I I think there's some value in, uh, I'm sure that's part of the all-up, you know, emergency response plan, but but um wanted to call that out explicitly in it, in addition to any type of, you know, continuity plan, whether that is IT infrastructure, all those those things that we've touched on. So um, but a lot of good points made uh uh by others. I just wanted to add in those, this couple of initial items.
Thank you. Yeah, um, just wanted to point out too, Councilmember Lovett dropped off. Um, he let me know he's waiting for his wifi to come back on. He got hit a little harder than we did, I think. Um, so yeah, any other questions on this item? I had submitted one. I'll just jump in on our questions spreadsheet. I actually forgot I did this. But I think when I was, you know, we were in a public safety committee meeting and um our fire chief had mentioned that, you know, there are some jurisdictions who can't necessarily afford um ongoing, of course. Um, I know this is like an LTE with, you know, ARPA funding, but they can't afford this long-term, right? And so talking about cost sharing and I I get that there's like more than enough for this person to do. And I hundred percent understand how important this work is. Um, that's not a question at all for me. But I was curious about if, you know, I don't know. So sometimes, you know, when you hire someone, you have to get them up to speed and get them going. Though I'm assuming we're hiring somebody who has this experience and it wouldn't take much to get them running. But, you know, are there organizations or or, you know, companies out there, consultants, that, you know, some of the items to accomplish might be create some kind of plan like, what, I guess what I'm asking is, is there a a benefit? Not so much in the money. I I get we're gonna spend that either way, but is there a benefit to just going outsourcing for certain things versus o- only having the person in-house do it? You know, is that something that you guys talked about at all? Or do you just strongly feel that this was out of the gate, the right thing to, the right approach, I guess?
So, yes, and um, so I actually did have coffee with the fire chief and we did talk about economies of scale um at some point in the future. Um, so I he here's what I would say candidly. In a two-year period, this person has uh a lot of work that would be assigned to them. And it will be really important for them to be in-house because so much of their work involves, um, frankly, the comp plan. Um, learning the city to get a coop delivered and tabletop exercises delivered in the first pass really requires intimate knowledge of how the city works and um, working alongside the people who will develop the plan. Now, four years from now, five years from now, once some of that work is really fully fleshed out and delivered, um, is it possible that some of the work can be done by an outside consultant? Um, particularly when it comes to like training and some of that other emergency management work, it can. Um, you know, absolutely it can. However, a lot of the work associated with developing volunteers for emergency planning in the city of Duval, um, how this city of Duval will manage evacuation, a lot of that is work that requires some fairly specific knowledge of how these departments operate. Every city's different and, you know, I don't come from a city background. Um, so, you know, but I can say the same thing about organizations, how KCLS managed emergencies and our evacuation plan for fifty buildings looked a lot different than the jails coop and will look a lot different than this city, will look a lot different than Monroe that has a jail and how they, you know, handle security issues. So, um, yeah, I I guess I would say there is work that can absolutely be outsourced. And there is quite a bit of work that would require specialized attention here in the city of Duval and working in partnership and hand in hand with the departments here.
Yeah, I appreciate that answer. Thank you. Um, and I would say, you know, I know you and I had this conversation as well where I had asked you, what if council wanted to go for an FTE, you know, and not limited at all? Say, hey, we we see the need here and we don't think that's going away. And I really appreciated your answer was that you felt, you know, all of this is new. I mean, there's a lot of work that hasn't been getting done, but this is an opportunity to limit it and really see how it works out over the next couple of years and then make decisions from that point forward. So I appreciated that answer because it gave me insight into how you view this all as a whole and that there is a bit of fluidity there. Like, we're giving our best guesses to what, you know, we know what needs to get done. We just don't fully know maybe how it'll all play out and things are going to come to light that we don't see now per se and that we can fine tune it in two years.
Yeah, and I would say with each new person that comes into the city with some amount of expertise, they're highlighting and bringing up different issues that, you know, we didn't necessarily know. You know, Sarah coming in as, you know, an experienced city clerk with some as, you know, an experienced city clerk with some experience, you know, looking at how we do public records requests here, you know, totally different perspective. And I think you're going to find that. I mean, I don't have a background and experience in emergency management. I just, you know, after talking to the mayor, talking to staff, developed some priorities and some guidelines, but a true experienced emergency manager coming in might say, Cynthia, you got it wrong. There are four other priorities here that you didn't even put on the list.
Thank you. So we'll go Mayor Okerlander and then Councilmember Napland.
Thank you, Mayor Portman. Just to add again on the city administrator McNabb's discussion about training and what have you, that's another responsibility of emergency manager is to keep track of all of the staff's required FEMA training. How many council members have taken FEMA training as part of being a council member or elected official? That's a state requirement and federal requirement. And so that is one of the things that an emergency management coordinator will do is ensure that everyone's getting proper training, that our required training as well as looking, seeking out opportunities for our staff to go off-site. The federal government pays for everything but your meal card to go to week-long trainings in Emmitsburg, Maryland and other places in the country. They will also pay for, you know, having your entire city and organizations within your city go back and do a week-long tabletop exercise. So there is, there's a lot of training and exercise work that happens outside of the emergency manager organizing it, but you need an emergency manager to have access to a lot of these programs. So that's another side of it as well. So I just wanted to share that, that there is a ton of free training. And everyone, including council members, are required to have that training. And it's basic, there's about four or five classes we're all required to have as elected officials. And if they do do an audit from the federal side, when we're asking for funds, that could be a problem for the city as well. So part of the urgency with the plan is that ours is currently out of date. So if our snowstorm today had been two or three feet, we had infrastructure damage, what have you, we might not be eligible for that reimbursement from the federal government to cover our costs during those events. So there's a huge financial impact to this as well that I wanted to make sure the council's aware of.
Thank you. Councilmember Napland.
Yeah, I, I had provided some information just prior to this meeting and I provided, provided it actually to others several weeks ago. And it has to do with what I consider my role as a council member, that when new positions are suggested and we have a body of work that needs to be done. You know, I think, well, how do other cities do this? How do other cities approach this body of work? How do they get this done? And so I went and looked at the six cities surrounding us, Woodinville, North Bend, Snoqualmie, Snohomish, City of Snohomish, Monroe, Carnation. I looked at all those cities and saw how do they approach emergency management? And what I saw was pretty consistent. And they have their director or their emergency manager, point of contact person, one of their existing directors, like police chief, fire chief, public works director, or, you know, in one city, it's the assistant city manager. And that is the point person. And it appears in these other cities that they, you know, it, it appears that they contract to get their emergency plan facilitated, how they get it, because an emergency plan, from my understanding, which I'm sure there's others here that have way more understanding of it, but that it's really a coordinated effort. You, you know, you need to work with the, you know, utility, the departments that do the utilities, police, fire, schools. It's a very coordinated effort and there are special people who specialize in this to help cities come up with their plan. And, you know, then you have practices and I believe we already have had practices. That's something that's been happening in the past, where the school district, the fire district, you know, the city, they all work together and, and maybe Director Lenaschewski could explain how we've done that in the past. But, but as part of my due diligence of being a council member, I just feel like it's really important to use our funds wisely and, you know, when you're doing something, which is what's being suggested here, that is so completely different than any of the cities around us, you have to wonder why, why would we use this approach? You know, other cities around us face similar issues. I mean, Carnation gets flooded, they are at risk of the dam breaking and they could be inundated and they would have to evacuate. You know, a lot of the cities around us have similar issues. And so why are we using this approach of a full-time FTE? I mean, that requires, you know, you get computers, cell phones, you know, do we have to have a vehicle? I mean, there's a lot of extra expenses when you bring someone in-house and you look at other cities and that is just really not the approach that these other cities and, and cities much, much larger than city of Duval, city of Monroe. Like I said, it's, it's a coordinated effort. And when you, when you, it seems to be that when these plans go into action, you all come together and there's a point person. And like I said, in these other cities, it's, it's an existing staff member. You know, that, that takes charge in an emergency. So I, if I, I'm not doing my job if I don't look and see how other cities are doing it and ask this question. And I'm not saying emergency management is not important. It's critically important, critically important. And we need to, we need to work on it a hundred percent. But we're doing something that is very different and it's very expensive. And I believe that we already have budgeted, in addition to this position, still consulting to have someone come and help us with our emergency management plan. It's in the budget that I've seen. And so maybe am I misreading that? But it's it, it's a very, it's a very expensive approach and I just, I don't understand it. And I, I would not be in favor of this position just because it, it just does seem so out of the ordinary compared to how all the other cities around us are approaching this.
Yeah, I mean, I absolutely understand that perspective. And I think, you know, when we get to the two-year end of the biennium and we look at, and, and this is a case for each of these positions. When we look at the end of the two years and we identify what deliverables were performed and what existing work remains and whether that existing work can be passed back to staff and in what form? And is there enough existing work to think about whether an FTE, a full-time FTE should be incorporated into the city structure? Those are absolutely the questions we want to ask. What are the cities around us doing? But this isn't that approach. We are not asking in this budget for a full-time position. It is a term-limited position for the sole purpose of kind of getting us to a healthy, safe place. And from there, I think it might make sense. And, you know, I don't know, you know, I, as I spoke to Mayor Portman McHenry, it's, it's kind of experimental. You know, we don't know how this is all going to work. But I would absolutely expect for any of these positions, if we were to ask to adopt them as full-time positions and, and carry that expense over the long term, that we would think about how other cities do them.
So what is the cost that you were expecting to spend on a consultant in addition to an in-house full-time person?
I don't, I have not priced that. I don't know anything about an emergency planning consultant, other than may, I don't know if Director Thomas can speak to it. It might be part of the comp plan.
I, I think.
So Director Lenaschewski has his hand up.
Letting them finish out their conversation and then unless I, did Director Thomas want to respond first or I didn't want to cut you off, Cynthia?
Yeah, I don't know. I guess the answer is I don't know.
Okay.
I did not plan any consultant fees for the purposes of emergency management.
So I guess Director Thomas or Lenaschewski, if you wanted to contribute to that. And then we'll, after that, we'll go Mayor Okerlander and Councilmember Shaffer.
I would defer it to Steve Lenaschewski. It's not a planning piece of work. It's held within the Public Works Department.
So I think the, two things at play. One, there is $25,000 in the budget that was budgeted this year to pass into the next year's budget to get that work done, to do the coordinated emergency management planning and, and facilitate that document. So the discussion of adding a limited-term position in that are something that would inter-work. Could one thing occur or the other, but that plan is in the budget to hopefully get done. If we transition to a limited term and it's part of the deliverables, then you would kind of slot those dollars and I would just say move them over. Wouldn't be up to me on how they were spent. At that point, it'd be up to Cynthia, but I think they could be consolidated funds. And just a point to on, you know, we, we use comparables as a way of start things, but I, I think the one thing here, and I just got some of this information that Councilmember Napland provided to the mayor and you folks a little bit ago, I reached out to three of my contacts. And please don't take this as a nefarious act, but what you see on paper and find on their websites isn't necessarily a direct indicator of what actually occurs. So for example, Monroe, the police chief and the public works director share a tenth of an FTE split. And they also have $14,000 approximately annually they share, they send to Snohomish County to do some of their work for them. Through interlocal, they also have a volunteer who does ten hours of public works director, emergency management work a week on the city's behalf. Granted, he is the retired public works director from Monroe, but he is there. They call him. He's the one who still handles the phones, gets the call out, changes the website, updates staff, like, and does a lot of that specific work. So that quick math is, that's about a point five FTE, which may not be directly shown in their documentation. North Bend, they do have point three-three FTE under administration in the HR department that works under the public works director for their portion of emergency management. So they kind of have about that same split in point five. Again, those things don't always show up productively in any sort of front-facing documentation, not on purpose. It's just, let's be clear, emergency management is the afterthought to most of our work and it really shouldn't be. We'd love to do more of it. You know, today, the pandemic, the last three years are an indicator of things we do need. And like Councilmember Shaffer said, other elements out there, special events, planning for shooters. I know the chief, the chief had to run out and help with traffic control because the two piles are out and cars are all over the place. So people get pulled and we're lucky as a small community to be able to support many of these items as a person, myself included. But we are split, you know, seven ways from Sunday and all the work that we are expected to do and want to do and can do. So a lot of that doesn't line up and they go out of product, productive work all the time.
Mayor Okerlander and then Councilmember Shaffer.
Thank you, Mayor Portman. To Director Lenaschewski's point as well is, you know, emergencies don't, you don't get to plan for them. If you haven't planned for them and prepped for them, you're toast. So, emergency management, one of the challenges after nine eleven is when the ICS and NIM system became the preeminent training tools for emergency management in this country. And they're now required. It is acknowledged on a national basis that jurisdictions do not do enough for emergency management and prepping and planning and planning for recovery. And you see that time and time again with every hurricane or tornado or mass shooting that happens in jurisdictions that haven't been prepared and haven't put the investment into the protection of their community and planning. I do want to point out as well, just a reminder for folks that these three positions that the administrations have proposed, communications director, community events coordinator and emergency management coordinator, these are all ARPA-funded. And having just come back from the National League of Cities again in Kansas City last week, it was continued to be re-emphasized on our city elected officials that one of the primary purposes of ARPA funding is to stabilize for cities, is to stabilize our city, our city budgets and bolster staffing and emergency management. Emergency management was hammered home quite a bit at the conference last week. And this is exactly what was intended. I do also want to note that if funds aren't used for what the Congress intended it, which this is a primary purpose, there are threats of clout acts. So that's something to be aware of as council is discussing these decisions. And I also want to note too that, you know, the three positions that administrations have proposed are based on the needs of the community, serving our community and keeping our community safe and educated. One of the items that we're not discussing much with the emergency management coordinator is the internal LNI training and safety work. That is critically important. It is law and we have to be on top of it. Otherwise, we will pay. Simple as that. Just like city administrator McNabb mentioned with the ADA compliance of a website, not doing these things has consequences. And those consequences directly impact our taxpayers at much greater rates than just doing the work to begin with. So that's one of the things that we were thinking extensively about as we are bringing forth these positions for not the first time. And I do want to note as well that the parks position, it is needed. But this was also through a discussion with a council member. It was agreed that staff would work on bringing this to the, the council for for discussion, but it was also very clear that that was predicated on not harming the other three positions. And that these three positions were the most important needs of the administration right now. So I'm, I've been trying to reach out to council members and haven't been able to get ahold of everyone, but I do want to also make it very clear that, you know, when we look as administration about what we need most to serve our community, it's those three positions. The parks position currently is not funded with ARPA. It would be funded most likely with ending fund balance or strategic funds. And again, that position's not sustainable either. So we are adding two parks positions. I would be happy to add all four positions. But if we are going to choose, I am strongly encouraging council to choose the three that are most important for operating the city, running a well-run government, just like we all discussed at our council retreat, and taking care of the needs of our community and keeping everyone safe. Those are the three functions of those positions that impact everyone in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaffer.
Thanks. Yeah, with, I, I guess I wanted to, you know, share my thoughts as far as you know, climate change and how it relates to, you know, potential natural disasters and the need for, you know, emergency management. I, you know, we're, we're all aware of what's going on as far as climate change and, and weather patterns getting more and more extreme. Frankly, I'm not convinced many cities, including those around us, have adequate plan. So if they, you know, if they don't actually, you know, have a full-time emergency management person, which, you know, obviously they don't, but that, to me, that doesn't carry a lot of weight. Whether they do or, or not, I'm, like I said, I'm just not convinced they, they've done adequate planning. We certainly have not here in Duval. I, I think we would all, you know, all agree on that. And what is adequate and what's not, well, that's anybody's guess. And no one has an answer to that. But in my mind, I think the, the more, the more we address this, the better off that we're going to be and the safer our, our residents are going to be.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think, you know, I appreciate all the conversation about it. I, I definitely think everyone here understands how important these things are. It's just maybe differences of opinion on how to get from point A to point B and making sure that we do explore options. And it sounds like utilizing the LTE option, having it be a limited term, just really helps us give us a little time to experiment with that and see how it goes. Were there other council members who didn't get a chance to speak yet that had thoughts or comments on this or questions? All right. So I think next steps, you know, as with everything in the budget, you know, we're kind of decompartmentalizing it and, and taking it chunk by chunk. And this is the first time we've really looked through all of these. I know because we didn't quite get to it with our last meeting, but you know, Cynthia, do you want, trying to think, you know, I know basically it comes down to if, if council members propose amendments and then where the majority of council stands on those proposals. So do you foresee any future discussions on this, on the positions specifically? Or only if council members have additional questions or want to bring it up as a point of discussion?
Well, I, I guess I would say we're getting close to needing to pass a budget. So I was hoping that this conversation would give council all the information that they needed. I've certainly taken notes on the suggestions of, you know, changing the community service or communications coordinator position to have a very explicit and by percentage more focused on economic development. The ideas around the community events coordinator. So I've taken notes. And again, you know, And again, you know. What I presented today were initial thoughts, I can absolutely adapt your, um, points that were made in this meeting. To the positions and as we write position descriptions. Uh, making sure that those are incorporated, um, but ultimately, you know, the point of, uh. My discussion today was, um, to, you know, bring clarification. Um, a deeper examination of what was in the budget and to answer any questions, I don't anticipate. Coming back with more information than what I've presented here, other than adapting when we finally do get to writing classifications.
Okay, yeah, so maybe to reframe, um, and then I'll go to council member Supple, but. I think especially this coming week for council, it'd be really important to. Essentially decide if there is some kind of amendment and this goes for everything, not just the staff positions that are requested, um. Are you going to propose any amendments, um, for council to consider, I think that would be really important to know. Um, so that we can all start, that we could dig into that at the next meeting, you know, um, just if you have that, I don't know. What the process is, if we would want to start utilizing like a decision matrix or input those things and. Kind of focus back into, okay, yes, no, on a multitude of things as we work through a list. Um, so maybe we can talk about that offline and decide what would be the most helpful tool for council to, um. Input things that they want council to consider, or if there were considered, uh, amendments. Um, council members Supple and then Mayor Okerlander.
Yeah, we, we just discussed, uh, I think before the. Uh, proposed positions, what about the other positions that, um, were mentioned previously? Are those going to be discussed at a future date or?
Um, no, because they're largely, um. Classification changes to existing positions, so due to either a seniority or complexity of work. Those positions are being reclassified kind of. Um, up through. The kind of progression in. That job, um, and I see lots of hands here, um, so. Please jump in, um, the two parks maintenance workers are new unique positions. Um, those are being added, but we haven't presented. Information on those, um, these were particularly requested for deeper dive. Because of their unique funding characteristics and, and they're new. Um, but we haven't. Presented more information on the other positions, so certainly we'd be happy to answer any questions on them.
Well, will they be, uh, are they in, um, the proposed budget?
They are.
They're currently in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, lots of hands now, uh, Mayor Okerlander and then I'll rely on you guys to help me know what order I think. Go ahead.
Mayor Pritchett, I would make a recommendation and so, uh, first I have to, council member Supple, there weren't any questions about those positions, so those are, that's. One of the reasons that they weren't focused on today, um, so there were no objections or questions of those positions when we presented the budget. Um, so, um, one, I would like to make a recommendation to council though, to make it easier on our finance team and our administration team. Um, to only submit proposed changes and your no goes. So if something's a hard no for you in this budget, whether it's a position or a funding item, please route that to the city administrator. Um, so that we have an idea and can make, um, potential changes before there's a vote of council. And I think that might help streamline the process, rather than having, um, long discussions about how good something is and we want to keep it in the budget. Um, the way that they do it in other jurisdictions is, is look at that go no go, if they don't approve it, you keep track of that. Um, you do your amendments and it streamlines the process, so just a friendly recommendation, you guys can do what you want. Um, but, um, I think that that might be an easier way to go for folks.
Yeah, that, I mean, that sounds good, I think that's essentially what I was getting at, I was just trying to figure out the mechanism or the tool is email the best. Um, or do we want to put it into an Excel spreadsheet like we did last time around, so maybe that's something we could, you know, if email's the best for you Cynthia. Then we can definitely do that, I think.
Yeah, and if we have, um. You know, amendments that want to be proposed, you and I can work together on a system for kind of, um, putting those on the agenda. As a separate agenda item is to discuss and, and vote on, uh, budget amendments.
Yeah, that sounds great. Um, I see Director Mason, Councilmember Naplin and Director Thomas, I'll ask the directors first, did you have a comment on? Something relevant to what we were discussing, or I just wanted to check in with you, because.
Well, it's fun, do you want to?
I don't know, were you, did, go ahead Director Mason and Director Thomas and then. Councilmember, I just thought maybe you had something relevant to what we were just discussing, so.
Yeah, you know, I mean, of course, I was hoping at this meeting to get some direction because. Anytime we change something in the budget, it affects. Yeah, especially position wise, it affects a lot of different things, allocations, you know. Internal service fund, uh, general, general, um. Fund overhead, so I was hoping that at this meeting, we might kind of get a like, yeah, we're all in or.
On the, on the staff positions we just talked about?
Yeah, but if, if that, if that's not going to happen, that's fine, I can wait until the twentieth or the sixth. Um, and then I also wanted to say, I do have a slide with all eight positions, um, I did, I don't know. We wanted to go over them, the rest of them real quickly, but if, if, you know, if. Councilmember Supple is fine with just kind of checking out the budget or looking at the last presentation. Then, um, it does have all of, all four or eight of the positions up.
Do we want to use time, does council want that now, because I mean, I guess it does fall under this discussion item. Title, or is that something you would want to read later, like if it was emailed out and then if you had questions? Um, reach out to, you know, Dana or Cynthia, how does council feel on that? Do you want to see it now, thumbs up, does anyone? I guess I would want to know with a thumbs up or yes, or something that, do you want to see that now or go through the rest, or do we want to? Because basically the next discussion item is budget in general and we were going to start working through those discussion requests by council. Um, so I just want to check in with you all. Does everyone want to continue looking through some of those other positions, or do you just want it to be emailed out later?
Sorry, I vote for email.
Email, okay.
Yeah, I'm good with email.
Okay, I just want to try and save time because I know, you know, we don't have a real end time to this, but I don't want to keep everyone here till ten either, so. Um, okay, Director Thomas and then council member, uh, Naplin.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest since we have a new council member that started a little bit, I won't say midway through the budget process. Um, but I chatted with him really quick and I think it would be helpful for us to get him some of the previous presentations. And documentation and that way he can go through it and if he has questions that are, you know, departmental. Or administrative, we can, we can certainly help that along.
Yeah, that'd be great, is that, who would do that then, is somebody gonna take that on?
I will.
Awesome. Great, council member Naplin.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with, uh, whenever I go to unmute, like this bottom thing comes up and covers where I'm trying to unmute anyway. I apologize. Uh, I just wanted to ask as part of the new positions or positions that haven't been filled, um. Previously or haven't been filled for a long time, is if the job descriptions could come to council for review before they're, um, put out. Put out for, um, recruitment. And in our code, right now, I believe it says if there are changes to job descriptions, they will be sent to council. Just, you know, for our review, but not necessarily for our approval. But since these are new positions and there's been a lot of talk about what are the job duties, you know, what is their scope of responsibilities? That it would be very helpful for council to have that and I, I just wanted to mention that, it's funny, M R S C had. This question had come up and it was something that was sent back in February and the question, it's like, ask M R S C and the question was, who has the authority to? Update job descriptions? And M R S C answers generally creation of positions and deciding job responsibilities is a legislative. Function, so, um, I, I do think it is our role when we're, uh. Giving budget, uh, taxpayer money towards a position that we really understand what we're, what we're spending our money on. And what those responsibilities will be and what we're getting for the investment. And so I would hope with all of these new positions that we would see those job descriptions ahead of time. Before they're recruited, I think that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about what these positions will do and. What value they'll provide, so whoops, I'm frozen. Am I frozen to that, oh, I'm back. Anyway, um, and then I had one other. Comment and all of a sudden, oh, in the matrix of questions, I had put a question in way at the beginning. And I'm trying to find it. It was about the positions and I never saw it answered, parts of it were answered, but the. Let's see if I can find it. And so I'm wondering, oh yeah, it was, I think, the third question that was put in the matrix and it was. That please provide the salary range and total cost of each new, uh, or additional F T E position. And the total cost would need to include, you know, what are the one-time and continuing costs related to the position? Um. And then, let's see, I think there were pieces of this question. Let's see, yeah, and then please provide job description and work plan, and since we don't have that yet and I've been, you know, we've been told that we won't. Get that until it's been approved. That at least before it's got, goes out for recruitment, the council would have a chance to review those, but I also would like to have just, um. An understanding of what the pay range is and what the additional costs are related to the position, because I think it is important to understand the. Full cost, like we're adding a lot of employees, I mean, we've gone from something like forty employees to almost sixty. In just a few years, that's an extremely large. Expansion and just, you know, are we having more I T expenses, because now we need more licenses, do we need more vehicles to have as a shared vehicle? Um, there's, you know, more computers and bringing in all of these in-house positions, which I would have liked to explore more contract work. Now we're going to buy phones for everyone, computers for everyone, it's a lot and I would just really like to understand the full cost. Um, so. So, uh, to answer both those questions, the costs are, um, in the budget, um. So between now and the sixth, I cannot, which is what a week away. I cannot promise that I am going to be able to identify all of the ancillary costs for these. Positions in terms of computers and cell phones and business licenses and. Um, certification costs, I mean, I can make an estimate, um, but I am going to be. Really honest, I don't think that I will have that kind of detailed. Um, cost structure in place by next Tuesday. I think an estimate is sufficient, but I mean, certainly there's positions here that would, you know, I mean, there'd be sending these employees to trainings. And things like that, I, I, I think that it, it could be a lot and I, I just don't know that, um, that is necessarily reflected in the budget. I'm not sure, maybe it is, but I haven't seen it.
It's on Director Mason's hand up, did you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in the budget, we did add the cost of computers, um, some training for some of the new positions. And the cost for monitors and cell phones. So, those, I mean, I guess they can be dug out, uh, they, they're, they're just under the small tools or the computers line item. For, for the, um, budget because, or for each department that they're in. Because it does not become a cost of the I T fund until af- after it's been purchased. And then the replacement cost is in the I T fund, so they're, they're easily identifiable. In, um, in each department. Of course, we don't have the, the parks manager one in.
And then as to the second question of bringing, um, job descriptions to council, um, you know, I, I'm happy to do so. Once they're written, um, and prior to recruitment, we want to get it right, we want the right people, um, in and. Um, yeah, I have no problem with that level of transparency and will be happy to do so.
So to kind of wrap up this discussion item, I guess I just want to revisit one of the last things I said, it sounds like if, you know, you have. Proposed changes or amendments, um, or things that just are no goes for you, that it would be good to email those. To our city administrator, um, and we'll work out a plan for that and I would say try to do it this week, um, I realize it's, I'm, I'm a. Uh, a slower processor of information, I really need time to think about things, um, but we are starting to, I mean. What's today, the twenty ninth, so December's upon us and we are running low on time. But we still have time to have more discussions too, especially I don't think we'll get through everything we want to talk about tonight and that's okay. Um, we just need to really keep an eye on that calendar and try to wrap things up, so I think at the end of the day, we need to really focus on. What would, if anything, you want to change and then we need to discuss each of those things with all of council. Um, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our second, uh, and last discussion item. Um, on budget ordinance, so I understand Director Mason might have a short PowerPoint on this, I think, is that correct? Or no? You're muted. But I felt like I could hear.
I was saying, uh, nothing has changed since the last presentation, so no changes, I was hoping tonight you might. Throw a bunch of changes at me and I could have them ready for December sixth, but. If that's not the case, that's fine, we can do it for the one after, so.
So, I'm going to go ahead then. Let me find the right one, I'm going to share my screen. Um, can you guys see the Word document there?
Yes.
Okay, great, so, um. I pulled things from the council discussion request spreadsheet. Um, I think some of them we have already discussed and so I can just gray those out as we go. Um, do, you know. Do you want to just go in order and if it's already been addressed, I'll highlight it, I didn't have a ton of time before the meeting to do this, so. If this is not, this is just, I pulled it off the spreadsheet because this format's easier to view, so I guess, um. I don't really know who entered what, but, you know, as we come to something, if whoever put it in wants to say something or I can just kind of read it out. And then people can raise their hands and talk about it or suggest something, um. And we'll just see how far we can get tonight, um, and I also just want to call it, it's eight o'clock. Does everyone want like a five-minute break to get up and strut and get the blood flowing in your legs again, or do you just want to do that on your own time? And turn your camera off if you need to do it?
I go, I go for a five-minute break.
Okay, why, why don't we take a quick five-minute break, I, I have eight oh eight, so let's try to get back here by like. Oh, I don't know, eight twelve or something like that, I don't know, just come back in five minutes and then we'll, uh, make sure and put your camera back on so that we can see. Um, but I'll just leave this up for now, so we'll see you back in five minutes.
Watch out. How's the, it's cold in here, oh, it's still really snowing. Um. Maybe we should put the fireplace on, how much longer for the chilly?
Hey Dana.
Dana, we can hear you.
But Dana's house sounds like really, really, really comfortable right now, I just want to say.
Am I muted now? No. If you're talking now, you are muted.
Is it said resolved? I just want to make, I still kind of want to go through, like, I think we're good on it. Um, this one looks like it was done because now um there's a continuation of strategic funds, so I just wanted to give the opportunity, I think, are we good on this? Council's ready to move on to the next one. I don't hear any objections, so I am going to gray that out. Um, the next one, King County Parks Levy. Um, I don't know if anyone who proposed it or mentioned this, did we already? I don't think this is one of the ones we already talked about, is it? Um, go to Councilmember Napland. Was this you?
Yeah, I had brought this up because, you know, once again, I I kind of look and what do other cities do? What was, you know, kind of um typical and what had we decided in the past to do with this money? And in the past, we had always put a hundred percent of this towards capital expenses. It was kind of just considered um money that we were getting from King County, their levy, that we would set it aside and use it, like I said, for capital projects. An expansion, something new or extra. And then the last budget cycle, uh, there was some shortfall of revenue because we weren't running the fields due to COVID. And so temporarily, we were going to take fifty percent of this King County Parks levy money and allow it to be in the operational fund to cover the shortfall from the lack of revenue from rentals. And so the expectation would be after the end of that budget cycle, when our revenues return to more normal, which they have, that we would once again go back to reserving it for um capital. Um, so in this budget, one hundred percent of the revenue has been assigned to an operational fund. So none of the King County Parks levy money is going to be set aside for one-time uses. And I don't know, in case others don't know, the King County Parks levy is something that we all voted on. And there was a very large expansion of the cost of this levy the last time it was run and it passed. And as part of it, there was a large expansion in the amount that the cities were allocated as part of the levy. And so I I can't remember what the dollar amount is at this point. I'm sure Director Mason could share what that dollar amount is. But I just wanted to ask, since this is a change from what had been done in the past, that I think we should acknowledge that this is a change and make a decision if we want to make that change, to have a hundred percent of it go to operations. Now, of course, it previously you weren't allowed to use it for, you know, maintenance type things and and now it isn't allowed use. But even though it's an allowed use, it doesn't mean that's what our city would want to do or feel like we should do. And other cities in general, I went and looked, there's a report that the cities have to file um of how they use the money. And even now, when you look at that report, other cities are not just dumping this money into an operational fund and spending it on operations. It's in most cities, it's set aside for special projects um and one-time uses. So I am wanting to know if this is what this council would like to do with the money. If they feel comfortable just washing it into an operational account and using it that way, or if they want part of it set aside for one-time uses.
So I think Director Mason has a response to that one question directed to her and then we'll go Mayor Okerlander, because I think, you know, it would be good to know where administration's coming from on that. And then we can go to the rest of council and have some discussion. So Director Mason?
So yeah, so I mean, this was a great question from Councilmember Napoli and I I reached out to King County and one of the reasons why they said it could be used for operations um for this levy because in the past, it was just supposed to be used for capital projects was just for the situation that Duval is in, where we have parts perks operations that are not covered by um activity fees. And so we are basically, we transfer money from the general fund to the the Big Rock Ball Field Fund to help pay for operations. You know, every, every year, every quarter, really, we do. So he said that this was exactly why King County had made the change uh to um allow uh funding of operations for parks.
All right, so we'll go Mayor Okerlander. And then after that, I just had one follow-up question for Councilmember Napoli, because I was just curious if you had specific thoughts um beyond, you know, allocating to park capital, what we would do as opposed to what's being presented. So go ahead, Mayor Okerlander first. Now I'm muted, you're muted.
There we go. Okay, just a little bit of technical difficulty there. Um, to Director Mason um hit on a good chunk of it is that this levy was specifically developed um to help augment um the staffing and operations and maintenance of city parks. And that's one of the key reasons that cities got so much more money in this levy. Um, and I do want to share with council that this was um a big effort by cities across King County to get this included in the levy to have that flexibility specifically for what Director Mason mentioned, is that many cities have plenty of money to build the parks. They don't have the money to maintain them um with especially pulling from general fund. Um, so we'll note that um if council does change this, this is going to make a major shift in the budget, particularly general fund. Um, and that will change um that there will be a significant number of changes that will need to be made uh in determining where funding comes from to support services of the city.
Hey, Councilmember Napoli, would you mind following up? Like, did you have an idea in your mind about, you know, the the why essentially, why would we change what's been proposed? And do you have your own proposal?
So I I actually did have an idea and um when I was voting for this, I was thinking this will be something more. Like, I'm willing to spend more because we will get more. And what I feel is happening is we are spending more and we're just the money is just getting used so that now we can take money back to the general fund to spend on other things. I consider it supplanting. Others may have different feelings about it. But I I feel like when I voted to spend to to tax myself more, that I wanted to get more out of it and not just allow general fund money to be spent on other non-park things and now we'll use this money for parks. So I feel a little bit yucky about it. So my proposal would be is that let's, I'm willing to compromise. And what if we did half of it for operations and maintenance and the other half, you know, we use for enhancements to our parks? You know, there's a lot of parks that have, you know, older equipment or we've um, you know, we have the sun shades we're working on. There's, there's just other enhancements that I feel like I would like to tell the community. Thank you for voting for this. We've received more money. And look what we're gonna do for you. We are going to listen to the community. We're starting the Parks Commission. What would you like to see? Here we have a chunk of money. What would you like to see us do with it? And so I just really feel like it should be community-directed in how we spend it. And I would really like to see a chunk of this money be available for the future Parks Commission to identify um improvements that they would like to see in our community.
Thank you, Director Mason.
Director Lenashewski had something he wanted to share.
Okay, we'll go Director Mason and then Lenashewski.
Okay, I I did did want to say we are still spending the park levy money on those projects, those parks projects, because we were unable to get them last year. So that funding is still available. Last year's park levy money that was deposited into the um the Park CIP fund is still available, so we will still be using it on some of those projects.
Thank you. Director Lenashewski?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, a couple of things. I am trying to share my screen, but not being very successful. I'm not used to one screen.
Let me stop sharing, maybe that's the problem.
And I can see if I, if you can't, I'll see if I can share mine.
You want me to share that thing you sent?
Uh, not that one yet, but it's part of it is part of my response and I, okay.
Do you want me to show the graphic?
I think I got it.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just slow. And I don't know where.
The suspense is building.
Probably less than really powerful, but um I got it there. So I think this is just the propagated. I believe that might be what council members are talking about on the twenty twenty-five Parks Levy. Um, so thirty-nine percent in in just is O and M related expenses of that levy and what people either reported and or pledged. So that's one thing, but to help become a little more self-sufficient for the parks, I'm gonna reshare a table. I talked to the mayor and Administrator Cynthia on this and we do have an opportunity to catch up a little. We do have a lot of rentals coming in from the uh outside of the city as far as its serving, it's argued. So I highlighted the table we went over a few weeks ago or a couple of meetings ago. Um, that has to do with the non-resident rate. So we do have a policy on who gets first kind of by the apple. It's it's the local sports groups for youth, recreational and then the select and premier are are fall they fall behind that. Um, but we have a lot of premier groups coming in because scheduling on other fields is difficult and or it's cheaper out here. Um, I took in a a whole season rental application just this week for a out-of-city baseball team because you know, for some reason. So my point being, we only charge fifty-four dollars for the non-resident rate for youth and or adult on our synthetic turf. We can't up that. We're we're well undermarketed by the comps that we set the other rates on. So that would be a sixty-seven fifty. We could change that through the rate um resolution that we will be bringing forward before the end of the year, so it's still waiting um to generate an MO on sewer rates too. So that's forthcoming. So we do have time to adjust this, but that's a way to kind of get a little bit more revenue relative to putting operations um, you know, as as uh, I don't know, not breaking as possible because parks are in development, they are, you know, a requirement to be a healthy and successful community. Uh, and not just my opinions, but many professional opinions. Um, so that's a little bit of a of a help. And I didn't want to distract from that conversation, but I heard Parks Commission and that's a little new to me. I didn't know what that was about, but um, but I just asked, so there you go.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I think the question on the table. Oh, wait, I had asked Councilmember, no, you already answered that, right? About the what would you use it for? So I think um the question on the table for council is what your thoughts are on how it's currently proposed. Um, versus, you know, the proposal that Councilmember Napoli spoke of, of splitting it fifty-fifty or or some variation of that. Um, I think one thing I would add that I I had been thinking about this one a lot and um I was thinking about how service levels are also almost like a park amenity, you know, but I I understand what Councilmember Napoli and I feel really strongly about it too. I think we have a lot of great parks. And it's, you know, a meaningful thing to get a new piece of equipment in or something fresh in the park, you know, and just refresh them or do different things. So I I think there's a huge value in that as well. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to hear from other council members what they thought about um this question and hopefully we can get to some kind of direction on this one. Either, you know, we don't, we want to keep it as proposed or we want to change it, because this would definitely be one that probably um requires some finagling. Uh, Mayor Okerlander, did you want to say something? And then we'll go Councilmember Supple.
Um, just a simple recommendation. So first of all, I just do want to share that everything that's in the budget right now is what we have programmed, will be programming for work to the nth degree. So um I would also, there's one side of cautioning against adding new projects um without prioritizing and deleting others um to manage the workload of public works and to make sure that they are able to achieve their goals for the next biennium. The other is um, there doesn't have to be necessarily um that much of a compromise because the council has if this is a priority of adding new equipment to parks, existing parks. Um, I think we all want that. There's some definitely dated pieces. Uh, but the council also has a strategic fund. Um, and that would be an easier place administratively to um allocate those funds if 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 council wants to um add new pieces. So that's probably the more simplistic way to do it and you're still spending the same money. So just wanted to share that as a potential idea for folks.
Councilmember Supple?
Um, yeah, you know, there's a number of developments that are in in works now that have community parks in them. Um, that are that are coming online now, just off of Big Rock and I think hundred and forty-third. Um, but you know, my my concern is yeah, you build up all these parks with new capital projects, but then they deteriorate after a year or two, because you don't have the money to maintain them. So, you know, I think the director showed that pie chart for a levy measure which includes thirty-nine percent of the levy was to be spent on keeping parks and trails clean, safe, and open, which is part of operations and maintenance, so I mean, I don't have any objection to really spending money, a portion of the money on maintenance of parks in lieu of spending it all on capital projects.
Are there questions, comments? Councilmember Napland, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I wasn't suggesting, you know, that you would use the whole fifty percent on new equipment, I mean, we have a lot of capital projects that are priorities for the community that we don't fully have funding for. We bought the new piece of property that desperately needs parking, and so even if we don't get the full, you know, dream of having the field right away, we need that parking, especially if I'm hearing, you know, Director Lenaszewski talking about having all of these groups that want to use the park. So I, you know, we have a shoreline that is falling into the river. You know, we have all kinds of capital needs, and I know we could pull money from strategic fund or do something like that, but I really think there's a principle here of setting aside half of it, kind of as an ongoing funding source for these type of capital needs, and some of those capital needs might be, you know, a degraded area that needs to be, have large maintenance done, that's also a capital cost. But I'm saying day-to-day operations and maintenance fifty percent, and then fifty percent to be more large-scale capital costs, which could also be, you know, a large renovation that may be needed as a maintenance, more maintenance-type renovation. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, make sure that no one was thinking, I thought we should spend half of the money on, you know, new slides every year or something, so.
Yeah, I have something really quick, and then I'll call on the directors. One thought I just had was, I'm trying to remember how long this levy goes for, so it goes past this current budget cycle, correct?
Yes, it was approved prior to the last budget being, by voters, prior to the last being approved by council.
Well, one thing I was just thinking of is if, you know, if council agrees and wants to bring on the Parks Manager, whatever that title ends up being, you know, and we get what we've wanted for so long, which is to get the Parks Commission back up and running. I mean, I would love to hear from, you know, that advisory committee, commission, whatever, and have them weigh in on this. I just, and so maybe we go with it as proposed, unless council totally fine, if you want to propose some change, I was just thinking that it could be a great thing for that commission to take on and to think about in the future, is how do you use those funds here in Duval? I don't know, that was just one random thought I had, Director Mason and then Lenaszewski.
Okay, just one last thing, so we are, the city is spending two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars in park levy funds in the twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. These are ones that are left over from the years before, we have to report every year saying what we did, how we spent the funds. And so for us, really, we could just say, okay, we spent half our funds on operations. We have projects that we were going to spend the funds on, but we didn't. And so, I mean, it's kind of, it's not a lose it or use it, but it's nice to be able to report that you actually spent the funds that have been given to you, you know, through the levy. But we are spending two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars in past park levy funding this biennium.
Thank you, Director Lenaszewski, and then I'd love to hear from Schaefer, Mercer, and Lovett.
A follow-up for Dana, of the two fifteen, do you know what the total annual is of that levy specific to Duval?
Yeah, so we get a hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars a year.
One-one-six per year.
Yeah, so about a hundred-thousand dollars is from the prior levy that we still haven't spent.
So of the one sixteen, to just focus on that number, so the reduction is had where fifty percent is for ops, fifty percent was somewhere else, are we backfilling the assumed continued need of that reduction in fifty percent of that levy money in the operations? Are we going to cut levels of service, or are we going to take it from somewhere else?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
So if the motion here is to take the one sixteen and cut it in half, operations, right?
Right.
We'd have to find fifty-eight thousand dollars to backfill operations or reduce operation expenditures and cost of thousands of dollars.
We would, we would have to, we would have to, so I believe the general fund is transferring in a hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars into Big Rock during this biennium for, it's around that amount, eight hundred-and-thirty-six, a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to Big Rock through the biennium, and so we would have to transfer in another hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars of general fund money. There is, there is no other money, except if you have, if, you know, we raise the rates, we might get some income back. Of each, half of all of the rates have to be set aside for resolution for replacement. So it really isn't, you know, if we raise the rates by ten dollars for, out of, we only get five to help us with operations.
I wasn't expecting that adjustment for, you know, non-residents to be a game changer.
It will help, it will definitely help.
So I guess my concern is that reduction has to either A, be backfilled, or B, be reduced in the O and M element.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we could reduce, oh, I don't know how we could reduce O and M for Big Rock. I mean, it's not like we spend a ton of money in that fund, but.
All right, Councilmember Napland, and then again, I'd like to hear from some of the other councilmembers too, but go ahead.
I will be done after this, but I want to make a point, and it was actually made by other people here in the room. It's that, once you use the money and you fill it in for something, you can't get it back. Here, all we've done is propose in a budget to use the money for operations and maintenance. And last year, the last budget, all we did was put it in temporarily, and now see the slippery slope we're on? See how much work and how much conversation of pulling it back? Once you've done it, you can't get it back, and this is how budgeting works. So once we plug this money in and say it's all going for operations, it will be nearly impossible to undo it. And so that's the point I want to make, and it was actually made for me, because now the talk isn't about should we use it for operations and maintenance? It's now, oh, well, if we pull it out of, we pull it back, well, then we're going to have to find other money to fill it. Well, we used to have other money to fill it. We used to use other money, we didn't use to have this hundred-and-some-thousand dollars at all, we had none of it. And we never used it for operations and maintenance, and now we're in a situation, because it's even just been proposed, that we can't undo it, because it'd be so much work, and that's how budgeting works. And that's why I feel like it's so important that if you're going to do something, you're really doing it probably permanently, unless you make a huge sacrifice down the line. So I, that's the point I want to make, and and why I feel so strongly about setting the money aside for capital expenses, and anyway, I will let everyone else discuss, and I apologize for interrupting again to bring that up, but it just so perfectly provided an example of why, once you do something, you can't undo it.
I want to, before you, oh, you're, I want a quick follow-up to you, Councilmember Napland, because I just wanted to understand, you know, one thing I was thinking about was timing with all of this, and you know, thinking about what is the harm in plugging it in, and I get your point that you're saying now, it is definitely difficult to claw it back sometimes. But I'm really excited at the idea of the timing of bringing on like a Parks Manager re-convening. I don't know when the last time we had a Parks Commission, but, you know, and then going down that road and letting them really advise on use of funds like this. And maybe, maybe they think it should all still continue to be maintenance, and maybe they're the ones who say, hey, you know what? We want twenty percent to go to this, or, you know, some, something like that. So I just wanted to know if this would be a no-go for you, or if, you know, you're open to seeing it through this budget as is, and then having that essentially be a task that that commission could eventually look at.
For me, I would say, if we want to wait and see what the commission wants to do, then set the money aside, because once it's been swept into the budget and that general fund money has been pulled back out of this to be spent on other things, you'll never get it back. You will never get it back, and so that's just how I feel, if we want to wait and see, then you set the money aside and wait and see, and then maybe, maybe they'll decide they want to plug that money in, and then we can pull the money back. But if you are building your budget, assuming that a hundred percent of this money is used for operations and maintenance, you will never claw it back is a very good use of words. You will never claw it back.
I don't disagree, I, and I know budget notes can sometimes be what they are, but that could be something that could be memorialized in a budget note, saying we want this to be re-looked at, and I know that sometimes those budget notes kind of aren't always at the forefront of our mind next time, but that's just one thought I had, and I wanted to bring that up. So again, councilmembers, be ready, because we do need everyone to weigh in on this so that we can move on. But we'll go, I see Mayor Okerlander and our CA McNabb have their hands up.
Just real quickly, I do want to remind council that at the very beginning of this budget discussion, when we talked about these levy funds, one of the things that we discussed is the fact that the city is going to be looking at Parks Maintenance Levy in the coming years. And the city used to have a Parks Maintenance Levy, and that's where the money came from to operate the parks. Steve could probably provide more detail on that. But we did used to have a maintenance levy on our parks, we've passed levies to build our parks, and we've had multiple council discussions over the last few years about potentially putting a Parks Maintenance Levy on the ballot to fund our parks. So this is a two-year thing, it is hard to claw, quote-unquote, clawback money. But the reality is, is that when our city hits capacity for residents and we build out, we're going to have to find a new way to do business, and this is part of that process. We are, have expanded our infrastructure beyond our means to take care of it as it stands today. So I want folks to keep that in mind, and also remember that this is part of the ongoing discussion of our municipal financial plan, and what strategies we take to make the city financially resilient over the long run. But the choice to Director Lenaszewski's point, we can pull money from general fund and backfill it, but something else has to get cut. So, you know, council can make those decisions, but we won't make any recommendations, I don't think, on any cuts to the budget that's been proposed at this point, so that will need to come from council if that ends up being the case.
CA McNabb?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a note of clarification, you know, I didn't hear Director Mason or Director Lenaszewski saying that it is, you know, necessarily difficult to make adjustments to the budget. And so, you know, I want to make sure that we're framing this as, you know, kind of business decisions that are happening here, and the city administration team will absolutely make adjustments to the budget and, you know, will do that diligently. So I don't want council to perceive that we are reluctant in any way to make adjustments or perceive this as, you know, particularly difficult business to do if council determines to, you know, change direction on how funds are spent and where those funds are spent.
I really appreciate that, thank you. I want to, before we go around, I feel like there's been a lot of discussion from the administration side, and I just really want to make sure that our other councilmembers have a chance to speak first, so I see your hand, don't worry, but Councilmember Schaefer, Mercer, and Lovett, you've heard the question on the table, you've heard the discussion, so I just want to get a sense, because anytime we see what the majority is leaning toward, then we can move on, so I don't want to keep circling around if we don't need to. Do you want to weigh in and go with Councilmember Schaefer?
Okay, thank you, so I want to make sure I understand. I don't have the full history here, although I probably should, but my, I guess my understanding is the Park O and M used to be funded through the general fund, this is like pre-COVID. And then with the King County Parks Levy, we, especially during COVID, we started to funnel part of that into Park O and M. And now with the increase of levy, we're continuing to propose we funnel that increase into Park O and M, is that understanding correct?
So, so kind of, with the new Parks Levy, they allowed cities to use the Park Levy money for O and M. And so during the last biennium, that's when it started, so we put half into Big Rock, because Big Rock is not, it's not, it does not sustain itself, it needs a lot of money from the general fund. And as you know, you know, our general fund for the last couple of bienniums, when we budget, we have less revenue, we have more expenditures than revenue. So this is the way, was the way of saying, okay, the Parks Levy, which, which the whole intent of the levy, not the whole intent, but part of the intent, was to help small cities, fund, or all cities actually, fund their O and M, if that's what they wish to do with the money. So, so last biennium, we put half of the money in, we did not spend any of the Park Levy monies from last biennium or this current biennium, sorry, on capital, so we still have that money left over. And then we also still have some money left over from the previous levy that has to be spent on capital projects. So we will be spending that money in twenty-three, twenty-four, if that goes according to plan. But we did put all of budget, all of the Park Levy funds for twenty-three and twenty-four in the Big Rock field, for, to be used for O and M. And that's where the controversy lies.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, and that does, that does help my, my understanding. And just, again, just from my understanding, I mean, we're not talking about giving back any money or anything like that. You know, our total funds, be it in the general fund, strategic fund, Park O and M fund, our total funds will be the same regardless, it's really how we shuffle or don't shuffle funds from one budget to another, and then, you know, to Jennifer's point, how we actually end up targeting that money to be spent when we do, when we do spend it, be it O and M or, you know, part, you know, improvements in our, in our parks. Which we could do, you know, we could do that from the general fund, we could do that from anywhere, although practically speaking, if there's a set aside, and I think this is what Jennifer was getting at, if there's a set of aside amount for park improvements, not just O and M. It's more likely that would be actually used for park improvements, and we could tell people, hey, look, you voted for this levy, and, you know, here's an example of what you're getting for.
That's definitely true, we do have to spend them though, and that's what we've had problems doing over the past few years, is spending those Park Levy monies.
Oh, and how quickly do we have to spend, maybe I didn't understand that, because if we just set this money aside in a fund, not knowing what we're going to do with it, how quickly does that have to be spent?
Well, I don't, you know, to be honest with you, I don't think there's a timeframe, but
Okay.
I changed, they might be like, hey, Duval doesn't need that money, they haven't spent, and we still haven't spent some money from the prior levy. So, I mean, it's just, you just have to report what you spend it on every year, so.
I see, okay.
Councilmember Lovett or Mercer, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, sorry, I can never unmute, this thing is so hard to deal with, anyway. So then, correct me, so the stuff that we didn't spend last biennium, that we did, that did not get spent for O and M, that's kind of still sitting in the pot, let's say, did that, does that, like, is it permanently allocated to O and M, like, we have to spend it on O and M, because we said it? Like, I think that's where I'm getting confused a little bit too, it's like, we said that's what it's for, and that's what it's going to be for, so we can't like go back retroactively and say, actually, it's for a playground and a rope swing, we changed our.
Right, we already spent that money on O and M for last year.
Even though it's sitting in a pot not spent.
Well, it is, it's sitting in the, in the Big Rock Ballpark Field money, and so it's not in that ending fund balance, though, because the ending fund balance is supposed to be made up of activity fees.
Got it, but it will go to Big Rock eventually.
So it is, it is in Big Rock, so we just repeat. Yeah, so it is, it is in Big Rock. So we just repeat it right into that fund and then it gets spent for operating and, and maintenance.
Got it. It just hasn't been spent yet, but it will be, is what you're saying.
Well, um, so.
It's allocated, not.
But yes, the Big Rock money has been spent in, for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay.
And but the money that was put into the parks capital fund, the other fifty percent is just sitting there. And that's, that's sitting there for capital projects this upcoming biennium.
Got it. Okay. And so then, so then the, so then I guess just, I, I am a little unclear on like maybe the pain point here. But if I'm correct, the pain point is the language says a hundred percent at tech O and M. And that's what people, that's what we're, that's what, that's where the discomfort lies. Because if we say a hundred percent O and M, then we're like on the hook for that. And like, it sounds like we could, if we wanted to, allocate seventy, thirty or sixty, forty if we wanted to. But understanding historically, when we fifty-fifty split it, there's fifty percent that's still kind of not dealt with because it's harder to get capital projects approved and through because it just takes way more time. And, no, I'm, I'm seeing nods and I'm seeing nods and I've, I've got a bunch of heads and some of them are going, yeah, others are going like this.
I think it's more staff time to do the project. It's the cap of project.
So it's, it's man hours. It's, it's like actual getting staff time to do, actually do the project is the problem.
Yeah, Steve might be able to better answer that question.
I guess, I know I'm going at this a long way, but what I'm trying to do is like, I have to unpack like the full, I have to understand the full chain, then, then understanding all these like piecemeal parts and like going granular and then jumping back to a bird's eye. None of that makes sense to me. I kind of just need to see it like in a domino's scenario. So for me, that, what, what, what it's looking like is because what I'm understanding now is staff hours at the availability to make that existing money turn into a playground has just been, we're way too hamstrung. We don't have enough people, don't have enough man hours. We can't have done. So here it sits. So we can take a hundred percent of the fund now and you say it's for O and M, and that just goes to O and M. And then we know it's there and that requires no staff hours. It's just boom, goes right into the operations and management maintenance rather of the parks. That's cool. Is the fear that if we did seventy, thirty, it's sixty, forty, we're in the same position once again, where there's forty percent of those funds sitting with not the time or the resources to actually put that money to work. And so then it's a, it's a question of money and use or money currently sitting because we don't know if we have the power to actually use that money. That's the question that we're sort of faced with. Is that fair?
I think so.
Cool. That helps me. I don't know that I, I don't know how I feel quite yet on it, but at least I feel like I have a better, more holistic view of the whole problem.
Yeah, before I go to Councilmember Mercer, I was just gonna say, I don't want to put words in Councilmember Naplin's mouth, but I think sort of it's more of a ideological uh discussion, you know, where it's like, can we use the money exactly how it's proposed? Yes, we can also do other things with it. And so what's the right choice type thing? Um, and so really, again, I, I always come back to, I think we're all headed in the same direction. It's just there's different pathways to get there. And what does this legislative body feel is the right choice that accurately represents what our community wants? And I think, again, you kind of end up in the same place in the end. Um, we just have differences of opinion on how to get there. Um, I think there can always be value to dedicating money to accumulate and then you spend it on a big project. But you know, there's pros and cons to every approach. Uh, go ahead.
Also be, oh, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I totally appreciate that. It would also be super helpful and maybe someone can answer this in, you know, briefly. It's like to wait, to know where, like, I heard Councilmember Napoli say, like, you know, the shore needs to be looked at. There's other things. It's like, that's not maintenance? Like, where does the line of maintenance stop and where does the line of capital project begin? It's like, I don't know. You know what I mean? To me, it sounds like the shore sounds like maintenance, but that, I'm probably wrong. So I don't know if anyone can eliminate me on that in five minutes or less. But um, you know, I mean, I think, I, I get it now though. And I think, yeah, I, I understand everybody's point of view.
Yeah.
I'm in a good spot, I think, now.
Yeah, okay. We'll go um Councilmember Mercer. And then, yeah, if there is staff that wants to explain where the line between the capital project and, I mean, because there are some things that are, seem like gray area, but maybe it's really clear from the staff perspective. Um, but anyways, go ahead, Councilmember Mercer.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of retreading some of the same ground and, and I think these are challenging conversations because they're, at the end of the day, it's really how we're allocating the funds. And, and, and so I, my couple of takeaways is, is, yes, I, I do think there's always value in being able to show a tangible, deliverable to the community, whether that's a new piece of equipment. It's sort of the shiny new thing to some extent. But then there is, you know, the, the ongoing maintenance around that item, whether it's painting, replacement turf, you know, lots of things that, that you know, have an immediate impact and then have ongoing maintenance. And in that respect, um, Councilmember Supple's comments were, I think there's also quite a lot to be said for keeping the parks shiny and new, even if they're not new things, so that they're accessible, functional, clean, well-maintained. Um, that, that's also very reflective and, and can get some of the same benefit. I think the challenge there is that folks don't often notice when it's well-maintained. They notice when it's not well-maintained. First is the, the new things you deliver sort of has that immediate impact and then it's sort of a, a sliding slope as it, as it degrades or wears or, or lives out its, its useful life. So, so I, I, you know, again, I'm, I'm, it's, it's at any given point, you know, which one you're looking to prioritize. I think that the hard thing for me is, you, you know, in the absence of, of a material pro- or, or a specific project or deliverable we're doing, I say that we, we took an approach last time where we did divide it into two pools. But that said, we also, we already currently have money that's allocated for capital projects. So it's not as if we have a zero balance and, and no funds to spend. So some of that public investment or showing that thing could come from the, from the previous funds, I think. Where my lot, my brain is sort of going as we pass through to the mayor's comments, if we, if we choose to allocate outside of a budget note and, and sort of shift that funds, then we have a whole in the operating, you know, budget that, or, or the general fund that we then have to backfill. And, and if that's, we're doing that anyway, why wouldn't we take advantage of the strategic fund to do that? So I, I'm not really getting to a specific recommendation. Uh, Mayor Pretam, I guess it's that I'm reemphasizing your comments is there's lots of ways we can, you know, um, for lack of a better word, sort of move the pieces on the board where we get to the end result. It's really just, and, and that's where I say we're really talking about sort of a budget. Um, how we define the fund. I don't know if that translates into the community's point of view. I do, you know, if, if in fact it is hard to, to sort of clawback that fund or reallocate, if there's not specific tools that we can shift around in the strategic fund, we can always make adjustments in the budget downstream. This is really how we present the budget publicly. Because I do think there's a little more flexibility and I, and I get concerned about hamstringing us by a hard fifty-fifty, particularly when we don't know. And that's where I think your comments around the park commission, uh Mayor Pretam, come in handy where we'd actually be getting input. So my preference, I guess, would be at this point in time to put, rather than rejiggering the budget in, again, we have some funds to spend on capital today. We don't have any specific projects in mind. We, it would require work to go back and rework some of the budget. I'll be, we can do that. But in the absence of not what, knowing what we want to do, my preference would actually be to put in a a prescriptive budget note in terms of allocating how we want to do that. Um, and really put the onus on ourselves to, to follow up and, and, and hold folks to task to, to actually execute that and move forward with, because I think it's also a forcing function around getting the park commission stood up, getting some other things that it drives some additional functions. But at the end of the day, I think I would be fine with either approach. I, I just, again, reemphasizing, there's a lot of ways we could, could mix this up. And, and I think it's really how we communicate it back to the community. At the end of the day, that's, that's going to really show the value, um, rather than where it's allocated to a specific fund, that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it definitely does. Uh, thank you. So I think, um, we've heard from everyone, but I just want to come back and ask the question, which is, um, I think, is it just Councilmember Naplin? Or is, does anyone not okay with it as proposed? Or is everyone, did you want to speak, uh Jennifer, or are you just raising, are you just raising your hand?
I'm just saying I'm opposed.
Yeah, okay. Would, does it change your thoughts at all with a budget note like we talked about, or are you still a no on it?
Um, I mean, a budget note is reasonable. It's, it's, um, yeah, I mean, the way the money is budgeted now is it's going to be spent on operations and maintenance, which does not include capital-type maintenance projects, which would be full turf replacement, things like that. It's mowing lawns, emptying garbages and day-to-day maintenance of Big Rock Ballpark. That is how a hundred percent is being spent. So, um, and it will be spent. So, um, that's how it's budgeted and it will be gone.
Yeah, that, that reminded, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, I agree. We have a lot of uh large maintenance projects that I would consider capital that we should be setting money aside for, or we're going to be in trouble at some point. So if we want to do a budget note, I'm one person. I mean, I'm just one vote. I, I can be opposed and you all can be opposed and it's fine.
I know, I heard some.
I'm not gonna change my mind.
I heard, I heard, yeah, I heard some support potentially, um, and I'm one of them for a budget note. For me personally, budget note wording would be like to reevaluate that as we get a parks commission online and just, you know, get some more eyes on it and determine is this something, is that the direction the community wants to do? I don't know if anyone had different ideas on what a budget note would be. Um, but you reminded me of something I forgot. Director Lanashevsky, did you want to give a, like a three-minute? Where's the line with maintenance? And can you explain that? So if it's all budgeted in the one way, um, you know, is this like, uh, you could paint a fence or, you know, those little yellow hazard things over the steel poles at Big Rock that keep disappearing? Like, you know, like where, where is the line and help us understand what, where it becomes capital?
Uh, sure. So I know Dana's looking at this. There's a couple of ways to look at it. Usually it's a financial threshold. We set ours about a greater than five thousand dollars, right? And or adding an item or a feature, replacing things is different. Um, there's a couple of different ways to look at it, but generally it's five thousand or greater and it's capitally you want it on a plan. So that, that has to be considered as well. Um, pretty simple. It's not a long definition. Would you agree, Dana?
Uh, yeah, or it would be like serious maintenance that extends the life of, of the equipment. But Steve is right. It would have to be five thousand dollars or more for it to be considered a capital project.
And then just a couple thoughts. Uh, I know we're, I, I don't, I don't care. So don't take it this way. And we're picking on Big Rock, but the only reason Big Rock is in its own fund is just to understand the revenues and expenditures relative to long-term repairs and maintenance of the field and understanding the rent. Big Rock is part of the parks programming, so I don't really care if you take fifty percent or whatever. Parks pay for parks. So they're, they are all one, no matter how you cut that, you know, cut that department up. So I, I guess I wouldn't look at it in, in one way, but again, we just, we account for things at Big Rock Park differently because there is a use revenue that we want to make sure goes back into the park. But it also pulls resources from the other departments of parks out of the general fund. So I don't want to leave that kind of, there is no difference other than how it's accounted for. Um, and then the last thing, I don't want to sound terrified or alarmist, but parks commission in my mind, hasn't been here since Laura and I have been around. Not that it's a great thing to do. I wouldn't hang any work on getting that on board because not to, again, be anything, we have one person apply to be a council member. We have to get another volunteer board on board. That's, I think that's asking a lot. Granted, it's parks and it's fun. No one discredits that because it's much more fun than council. But I would say it's another thing that certainly in my mind has to come with a specif- specified position for parks. Uh, but yeah, there.
Well, just to reiterate, like I said last time, I'll be a squeaky wheel too. That when we did that survey, I think we got around two hundred-ish emails of people who wanted to be contacted for more information or input. So parks are a little more exciting than all the baggage that comes with council. So I just want to say that. I do, I'm excited about it. And a lot of people I've spoken to over the years had said, yeah, if it's about parks, like hit me up. So, um, Councilmember Love It, and then I don't know if Naplin's just, if you still had something or if your hand was just stuck up. Um, go ahead, Councilmember.
We were just giving uh high fives. That's how we decided to give each other high fives on, um, no, uh, I would just, I just a quick note, I would agree with uh Councilmember McHenry and also Naplin in just a budget note. Just say, hey, let's take a look at this, you know, uh, again, I mean, it's, just move it forward, but let's do have like a review. I think that would be wise. I don't see why that would get in the way of anything. Um, because at the point in time where we had the review, if we decided to keep it at a hundred, we would keep it at a hundred. But at least it gives us a little peace of mind and a little flexibility that may not currently be there. I think that would be fine.
So I could always work on wording of that. I kind of wrote, jotted down a note um for a budget note. But just to recap and tell me if this is wrong, I think that Councilmember Naplin, you said you'd be happier with a budget note, but still opposed to a hundred percent allocation as it's currently proposed. Um, and then is there anyone else who's against it going through as proposed, or is everyone on board with it as proposed, but also want a budget note? So anyone who is not okay with it as proposed and with a budget note, besides Councilmember Naplin, could you let me know right now? So everyone's okay with this in the budget as proposed, but um, is there anyone against writing a budget note? Or is everyone okay with uh documenting our discussion in that way? Okay, well, we put a bow, tied a bow on one thing. So I'm going to um reshare my screen really quick. I kind of had in my mind that maybe we should try and just be done by nine-thirty, no matter what. I don't know if everyone, I can't imagine anyone would not be okay with that. I want to get through as much as possible, but I also want to acknowledge that, you know, it's getting late. So, okay, so I will highlight that one. Um.
And Mayor Pretam, I do want to share, we have um some staff that are um physically still in the city and it's getting a little dicey out there. So the quicker they can get home, the better.
Okay, um, I mean, would we want to just be done after that long discussion then? Or I don't know if there's anything we can, I don't know. Um, of all the ones on the screen, so we've got strategic fund usage. Did we already wrap on the utility rate increases? My memory is not great on that. Or do we still need to talk through that?
Uh, we were waiting on a summary from FCS group, so we're gonna, a Q and A narrative. We should have it by next week.
I'm trying to think if there's a quick one to go through. Uh, Director Mason, oh, and.
Oh, the strategic fund one is super simple. It's really just an accounting request. And if there's an opposition to it, I, I don't even know. Maybe that's being planned.
I don't think there's, there's no opposition to that request.
So strategic fund usage, should usages strategic fund occur on a reimbursement process? So, um, do you, does anyone want to explain that just really quick? Or I mean, I could just read this out loud, I suppose, or is there anyone? Do you want to take a stab at that, Director Mason, or just explain?
I, I think what Councilmember Naplin is saying is that, um, is that she would like, um, this, when we purchase things with this strategic fund, we then transfer money from the strategic fund into the general fund or whatever fund it's coming from, rather than saying, okay, we budgeted, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in expenditures we paid with first strategic fund. So we're gonna just transfer it all over to the general fund right now. And I think that makes one hundred percent um sense. So.
Okay.
And then, oh, go ahead. Another super easy one is the contingency fund. Um, the end of biennium budget adjustments have a, a transfer from the general fund to the contingency fund to fully fund it.
Okay, before we get to that though, let me just ask council, is there anyone opposed to that? Number three, that proposal with the strategic fund? Okay, so we'll consider that good to go then and make that change. And then which one? You said the contingency fund one's really easy too?
Yeah, so the end of biennium budget adjustments have the general fund transferring a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the contingency fund to fully fund it.
Okay. I mean, is any, is everyone okay with that? It sounds like there's agreement by staff as well. So no opposed to that? All right. So that sounds good. Um, I feel like utility rate is a monster and we're waiting on that piece of information, so we'll just skip over that. Um, you know, I, I know uh Councilmember Schaefer really wanted to talk about economic development, but I'm a little worried about time. And so, because I think that's a more in-depth conversation. And so, because I think that's a more in-depth conversation, um, go ahead, Mayor Okerlander.
Um, I just want to say to that point, um, exactly, Mayor Protam is that it's a very in-depth conversation. And there are some things, um, that may not be programmed in the budget currently, that we can have discussions about leading up to the mid biennium and make adjustments at any time. So for example, um, you know, if uh, council decided to save, spend fifty thousand dollars on an economic development consultant, we could come back and do um, a budget adjustment later in the year and approve that and have it in our mid biennium, official mid biennium adjustments. So the budget for all the new council members is a living, breathing document. Um, when council approves it, there can always be changes throughout the biennium. Uh, we typically have two times where we, or one time in the, after the first year where we actually make significant adjustments based on revenue and expenditures, new additions, deletions, et cetera. Um, but at the same time, we will also um, add things that come up, um, in the interim before that mid by budget amendment. And council approves them, knowing that they're going to be adjusting the budget in the following fall. So, um, this is a living, breathing document and some of these things are really, um, in-depth conversations. Really need a lot of staff time dedicated to them as well. So it might be, um, a good idea to, for example, you could do a budget, put some money for economic development and do a budget note that says what you hope to happen. And we try and get there during the biennium, um, and we had, try and have those conversations. So that that might be a way to, um, quicken the conversation, but also keep it on the table, uh, for the biennium.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um. Okay, so I just want to make sure then, so maybe we leave the rest for the next meeting, but also use that time at a future meeting here soon to discuss anything that maybe we do want to table, but keep moving forward. But, um, is council good with, I just want to circle back to those staff positions that our city administrator spoke about tonight and presented. Do you all need this week to think about it? But I'd really like to know by the end of the week from everyone. I would hope that you could say, I'm a no-go on this, or here isn't an amendment I've been thinking about. Um, or is anyone, everyone ready to say yea nay or on each of them, just so that we know um, where our sticking points are. Uh, Councilmember Schaefer, go ahead.
Yeah, I believe, uh, and Cynthia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you were going to update, uh, some of the information based on the conversations tonight. Is that correct?
Um, well, I can. So I think where I ended, um, my understanding was that, um, should the positions be approved in the budget? Um, that council would want me to come back with job descriptions and have those go through council review, which would incorporate the comments that were made tonight, um, versus um, changing the information that I presented tonight. Again, prior to the positions being voted, um, I thought what I heard as my takeaway was if the positions were approved, council would want me to come back with the job descriptions prior to recruitment to ensure that you all see what you want to see in those formal job descriptions.
That, i- if that, that may be, I guess, my, my point was, I, you know, before we approve uh, the, you know, with using the current descriptions, not job description, but just the, you know, the the high level views you've already given us. I think it would be useful for council to get the updates that we discussed tonight. So again, not job descriptions, but just, uh, just really the 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 discussion we had tonight. If it's possible to update the information.
Yeah, tha- that's no problem. I can update kind of the, the documents that I put together and resend them out by the end of the week.
That that would be great. I I think we would, uh, appreciate that. And, uh, basically that way we can, you know, maybe just get any last minute comments direct directly back to you. Or, uh, and then hopefully be ready to, uh, vote on this, um. And, uh, uh, Mayor Portam, when were you thinking to actually vote on it? Next Tuesday?
Well, vote, voting on it is just approving the budget. What I am asking for is, and I don't know if you need the information you're talking about to say you support or do not support the positions. I think I wanted to kind of keep taking chunks of the budget and say, are we good on this? Can we, we we talked about it, we can lock it away now, like that's done. Um, and so I don't know if you're ready to do that tonight, or if you need to see those updates from Cynthia before you say yes on this one. I'm, I'm not in support of this, you know, that kind of thing. That's what I'm looking for tonight.
Yeah, I I would like, I personally would like to see the updates.
Okay. And that's okay if you do. Um, I'm just gonna, if anyone does know where they're at, it would help me understand, um, you know, for us to just get whatever information we can from council to help move forward. So you need the information she'll send this week. And then after reviewing that, then you'd be able to, you know, email her and and let her know where you stand on them then?
Yes.
Cool. Uh, Councilmember Love it and then Napoli.
Uh, yeah, just weighing in, I would say I don't have any, an issue with any of the positions. The one that I zeroed in on mostly was the communication ones and just refining that role a little bit. Where there's like social media mentions and this mentions, that one seemed like it cast a super wide net and expectations would get like unrealistic, super quick. The way you distilled like the two-year plan and kind of explained that that was really your action items, like those are actually kind of the main goals. Any way to clean that up would be, that would be the main one where I'd be like, that would be a hard job to understand, uh, walking into it. Um, that was my main, my main one that I'd want to see maybe tweaked, but as far as roles are concerned, no real adversion.
Okay, thank you for that feedback. Happy to do that.
Councilmember Napoli?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I I was in agreement. I consider, uh, what has been provided more of a work plan and deliverables. Whereas the job description is something separate, um, and different. So getting those, uh, work plan deliverable type descriptors updated based on the conversation today, I would need to see that as well.
Um, would it be okay, is it too much of a reach? I think, are you a no-go on the emergency manager as a position? Or do you still want to see that before you commit to like a hard yes or no on anything?
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to see options on that, a a different, you know, a consolidation, um, three positions, maybe consolidate into two, have someone coordinate it, but it doesn't sound like anyone else is interested in that, which is totally fine as well, but that's where I stand. And so if I have to say no to one position, because I would want things consolidated, I would have to say no to the emergency manager because it's just such a different, um, you know, method of, uh, achieving those deliverables than I've seen anywhere else. So I'd have to say no to that position, even though I think that those deliverables need to be done. I just think that there can be a consolidation of tasks and we've added a lot of other staff. And I I think there's other ways to achieve that in a much less expensive way.
Got it. Um, any other council members, or does everyone else want to wait and see more information this week and think about it more? It's totally okay if you do. I just thought, hey, maybe everyone's. Go ahead.
Yeah, and and I'll just provide high, high level guidance. I mean, I I think, you know, I I acknowledge some of the concerns raised by um, Councilmember Napoli, just around costs and others. I, at the same time, also, you know, there, there are specific things that were called out. I think specifically around the, the, uh, emergency management, even around the L and I, where we're out of compliance today, where there's. So, so I think it ultimately comes down to, to the, to deliverables. I think that's the key. I think, you know, on a day to day, it's, it's, um, the job descriptions are, are very helpful from, from a programming standpoint to really understand what folks are accountable for. I think when I look at where the gaps are, it's really what the expected deliverables are coming out of those roles. And and as they were described, I I think I'm, I'm on board. I'm a little concerned as Councilmember Love it said that that there's often, there's, there's actually, if if anything, more too much rather than too little, that would, would lead me you know, to err against some of the consolidation, because I think that can muddy the water, particularly get as we're trying to to recoup some lost ground, but but that's kind of where I stand, uh, today.
Okay, and Councilmember Napoli, is your hand just still accidentally up, or did you have something else? Okay. Um, all right, well, I'm not seeing anyone else jump up and that's okay. Um, so I think we need to really try and think about it a lot this week. Um, see what other information, um, Cynthia comes back with us. We still have some things on our, um, discussion request sheet that I just want to work through. Um, but I think what we'll do at our agenda meeting, um, is we'll work through the plan of when we'll accomplish that. And also look at, do we need to schedule an extra meeting on December thirteenth to make sure we have time? I find this really helpful. I hope you guys do too. I think it's nice to kind of go through each thing and talk about it and then make some kind of consensus and move on. Um, some will take longer than others and that's okay. Uh, Mayor Okerlander?
Um, I just want to note for council as well that we will have one director, well, we'll have two directors out after the sixth. Um, one, and so that's going to be, um, if budget is not, if we're not, council's not ready to um, move on that, that it's really detrimental to not have those people at the table. Um, and that a lot of us will be likely be gone the week of the twentieth as well. So, um, timing is getting really, really tight. So to the Mayor Protam's point, get your questions and your no-goes into Cynthia as soon as possible, um, because they'll start, staff will start working on the packet for next week tomorrow. And so, um, we are really at time critical and they have a lot of of stuff to prepare. So, um, I would just ask that you be very open and upfront about your no-go, no-goes questions. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm available, um, as is Cynthia. Um, uh, for the New York council members, I've got a lot of history on these things and would be happy to share, uh, where these have come from. Um, if that helps give you the historical perspective on why these things have come forth and happy to help out any way I can there.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, it's so tough because we lost out on some extra meetings in October, just the way things went, which is totally understandable with everyone being so busy. Um, and maybe we should have tried to squeeze some more meetings in November. But, you know, we'll get it done and we can, um, talk offline and figure out, you know, maybe the whole next Cal on the sixth is devoted to continuing through this. So we can just bust through these discussion points. Uh, Cynthia, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm really important if you, um, anticipate meeting or a desire to do a budget amendment. So for instance, uh, somebody is going to have to, if you are interested in having that parks position as part of the budget, we will need a budget amendment. And so the sooner you get those to us, the sooner um, we can work with our clerk to get them on the agenda for next week. Because staff meets on Tuesdays to kind of plan out how we're going to get the council packet prepared. And so if you have an amendment that you would like to make and want it discussed on the sixth, the faster you can get that to us, the more time, uh, our clerk will have to prepare it and put it on the agenda.
Is, so you would need, uh, some kind of consensus from council that they for sure want to add that position into the budget? Is that what you're saying?
No, um, well, yes and no. So I just need a single council member to offer an amendment.
Okay.
And then you all would vote on that amendment, but I want to make sure that any budget amendments are listed on the agenda for discussion and decision, um, so that our notice requirements are met.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Napoli?
Yeah, I'll make it easy. I'll request that amendment now. It felt like there was enough interest in it. I don't know if there's, you know, majority, but I think there's enough interest that I would like to request that amendment to add the parks manager.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Um, okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at nine twenty-four. I hope everyone who's out and about can get home safely. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.